We'll get going as soon as we have Councillor Zelka, which we now have. So just so everybody who's coming now, we just finished a meeting of council, which has been adjourned and will continue after this committee of the whole. So depending on the kinds of decisions made by the committee of the whole, the committee of the whole really just is a more relaxed, you'll see I took off my tie, my chains, is a more relaxed format where we have an interchange. We typically sit in the body of the chambers here, so we have people join us. Unfortunately, because we have multi-meetings tonight, council, committee of the whole council, in-camera council, it's a little bit awkward, but we'll get through this. And there may be, there may well be some motions that come out of the committee of the whole, that some of you may be interested in staying for the council meeting where they'll be dealt with. Because we're only advisory in the neck for the committee of the whole, we advise ourselves, so to speak, but actually being legislative format, we have to sit as council, which we'll do at the end. So that's particularly so for a number of the issues that arise with respect to things like, for instance, some of these heritage revitalization agreements. So you may want to stay tuned until after that. But I think councillor Murdoch, who's going to chair the committee of the whole, will make mention of that, that we'll do the legislative part after the meeting. So welcome back, everybody, and I'll turn things over to councillor Murdoch, who'll chair the committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, everybody, welcome to this committee of the whole. My name is Kevin Murdoch. I'll be chairing this portion of the meeting, as the mayor said. I have to start off, and this is why I do it with Songhais here, to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is a traditional territory of the coasts and straight Salish peoples. Specifically, we recognize the Lakuanan-speaking people, known today as the Songhais and Iskwa Malt First Nations, and that their historic connections, their historic connections continue to these lands this very day. So hi, Shaka. And that is the first item on our agenda tonight. I do want to just point out, though, as the mayor's pointed out, so we'll do this, we'll have probably a quick two or three-minute break, and then we'll cut into the council meeting afterwards. So item number one on the agenda is a presentation by the Songhais nation. Welcome very much. I understand we have Florence Dick and Christina Clark here from Songhais to do a presentation on the 10-year plan. So with that, please come forward, welcome.
I have to tell you what a pleasure it was to see friends, familiar faces, and that is thanks to your work, reaching out to Songhais nation and beginning that relationship. So here I come into your house, and it's a place I'm familiar with, and pleased to see you all. So I have a presentation about our strategic plan, but what I've done is I've put a little bit of a history lesson in it for you. So if I can maneuver this thing correctly, nope, that's the wrong thing to do. No worries, I know how to work this part. Except for there's no page up and page down. There they are. Okay. So this is Lakuanan traditional territory. And so you can see that the scope of the territory at the time of treaty-making was over to San Juan Islands, throughout the Greater Victoria area, out to Callwood, I think it's Albert Head is the landmark, and on the other side, all the way to Gonzales So this is where the Lakuanan-speaking people were at the time of contact. So in 1850, when, he wasn't Sir James Douglas then, he was Chief Factor, James Douglas, signed treaties with the Lakuanan people. He signed it with the family heads of the extended families that lived in these territories that you can see on the map. And you can, at least one you'll recognize is, that's Kansansun. Iskwa Malt Nation descends from that family, and they often use that name, although the Kansansun people are also Lakuanan-speaking people. So at the time of 1850, there was a census, and there were only 700 Lakuanan people at that time. And now the population is 630. So it stayed fairly stable throughout the years. So what the treaties did was, in our interpretation, and different nations interpret it differently, but for Songhais, we acknowledged that there was an area of land that was surrendered in exchange for cash, clothing, blankets, and the signatories and their descendants retained existing village sites and fields for their continued use and the liberty to hunt over unoccupied lands and the right to carry on fisheries as formerly. So those treaty principles are held dear to the nation, and they're still seeking the ability to exercise those treaty rights. And currently, if they were to hunt or fish as formerly, they could be arrested. So we're still working on having those rights respected. We may have to do some kind of a court battle to get that acknowledgement of those treaty rights. Songhais village, I left the H out purposely, because that's how it was spelled at the time of this map. This is an 1860 map, 61 map, from Pemberton, and this lovely photo underneath that shows you the longhouses that were on Songhais Point. So this is where the Delta Ocean Point Hotel is now. That was the main village site, so it was really kind of the first place that was marked as a reserve. And that's predominantly where Songhais lived at that time, up until 1911. So this reserve, reserve number one at Songhais Point, I like to show this map, because this shows how the plots were divided up among the people of the day. And that's not something that's normally done in reserves in Canada. They don't often divide them up among the band members. They keep a lot of the land as common land. And I'm thinking that the influence of all of the plots that were divided up in Fort Victoria may have just, they may have just sort of borrowed that practice, but they carried that practice on when they moved to the, in 1911. The other reason I like to show this drawing is that the schedule to the right lists all of the names of the people and which acreage that they had, and whether they had a house or a farm there. And for our members, these are their relatives. This isn't ancient history, these are names they know and people they remember, and so they think rather wistfully about that reserve at home. This unfortunate, we had a presentation to the Times colonists today, and was only mildly embarrassed to show them this from their own publication. A hundred, 107 years ago, the Times colonists reported that the native people were in the way of progress. And I guess they thought that native people didn't read the paper or didn't see these things, but indeed, they do, and they do today. We see the comments on various reports in the paper. So there was a desire to move Songhais off of that village site. It was considered a very valuable piece of land. And there's a quote here from the mayor of the day in 1909 in the House of Commons, when he spoke to the governor general and said that, "Why should 112 individuals occupy 120 acres and stand in the way of natural development of trade and commerce?" So there was a push to move the Songhais people off of that reserve. It met with resistance, and there were some back-room shenanigans to make it happen, to turn that no into a yes. So the nation was moved in 1911 to the current site at Admirals and Craigflower, and this is a drawing here of that reserve, when it was still a proposed reserve. And you see McBride here in the top picture, I think he was the premier of the day. So this, then, is the reserve that the Songhais people reside on today and have done so since 1911. That move was really being taken out of the regional economy. You could no longer, we were right next to the fort, there was a lot of trade, there was a commercial fishery. This coincided with the various laws to isolate and oppress the people, such as not being allowed to leave the reserve without permission of the Indian agent. So this began a 100-year economic and social depression, and we are still trying to recover from that. And I won't speak much to this slide here, it sort of speaks to itself, it represents that 100 years, and the 100 years of oppression and pain. And this is Cooper Island Residential School. They sent kids to residential schools far from home, so they couldn't escape and find their families. So our folks would go to Cooper Island or Elburne, and this is one of the schools here where our members went. But we'll switch that to this lovely photo, this is Florence's Two Sisters, and this is the cover of our book. And these smiles really represent who the Lakuanan people are. With all that has happened, there's this incredible resilience and hope and humor and just loveliness that has kept me working for them for 23 years, because really lovely people. So our mission and vision and values is expressed here. The mission of Songhais nation is to achieve the community's vision through good governance, delivering programs, and pursuing projects and initiatives for the benefit of the people. Our vision is a healthy, self-reliant, progressive community that honors tradition and culture and invests in the future. And our values can be expressed by the word iCHGOWALAWIN, my very favorite Lakuanan word, "with one heart and one mind. We commit to help one another, to forgive one another, and to love one another with respect, honesty, and courage." So as we go through our day working for the people, these are the values that we hold dear. And our governance, so the map I showed earlier showed the people that signed on to the treaties, the Douglas treaties. Those were the heads of those extended families. And decisions at that time were made by consensus, and within a family, they would meet and discuss it, and oftentimes it was the aunties and the mothers that would tell the menfolk what it is they expected them to do. It's not so different today, although we have two ladies on our council. We have an elected chief and five council members that represent our members and take responsibility for the nation's lands and financial assets. So between 1876 and 2017, Songhais elections were held under the Indian Act. But in this June, we implemented the First Nations Election Act. And the main difference of that is it's, rather than a two-year term, it's a four-year term. We are going to be developing a custom election code with the membership, and where they'll consider such things as whether they want to do staggered terms. But this gives us the time to do that work together and to develop that constitution. I've got quorum of five, but it's actually a quorum of four, so it's a majority, four out of the six council members. And the chief is not a veto, he has the tie-breaking vote. But I found, the many council meetings that I've witnessed, that they don't generally make a decision until they reach consensus. They'll continue to talk it through until everybody agrees. So very rarely do we hold a vote where some councils say no and some councils say yes. Generally, we'll talk until everyone agrees. This, it's missing a photograph of Jackie, that's rather lovely on the right there, disappeared somehow. I show this picture because this shows the election results since 1959. And you can see the stability that we've had at the nation. Jackie's father, John Albany, was chief from 1959 to 1989. He was the longest-serving elected chief of his day, and I believe got a letter from the Queen attesting to that. So you see that when folks were elected, they stayed on council, many of them for the remainder of their lives or until they retired. And that was true of our late chief, Robert Sam. He stayed on council until the last. So we appreciate that stability, because it allows us to move forward and not have to start over with new councils. There very much is a respect of the chiefs and the councils that came before and wanting to keep carrying forward. So when it's election time at Songhais, we don't worry, we don't, well, we used to. But frankly, after 23 years, I trust the membership to make good decisions, and they continue to do that with every election. Our chief and council has duties that are similar to a local government and to other levels of government. Community engagement through public council meetings, general meetings, and annual general meeting. We have focus groups and advisory committees, and council's responsible for exerting Aboriginal and treaty rights, protecting jurisdiction over land and resources, strategic planning, lawmaking, policy development, intergovernmental affairs, which is why they have to be speaking to you today. And also representation at regional and national First Nation leadership gatherings and on regional advisory and governance boards. So we have representatives on the Greater Victoria Harbour Authority, the South Island Prosperity Project, and others. Our strategic plan, we started this process about, I guess it's maybe nine months ago now, we brought in a consultant to help us, but we asked him not to develop a plan for us, but to teach us how to do strategic planning, which really meant teaching us how to get from the what up to the why, and what is, where are we trying to get to? And it was a very powerful process. And what we found was, we were doing a lot of the things that are in this plan, we were already doing them, but we didn't have the, we weren't able to articulate the story of what it is we were doing and why. And this process allowed us to do that. And so in the document that you've been given, there's checkmarks next to a lot of the items, that means we've started already, and some of them we've completed already. The First Nations Election Act was a goal under this plan that's already been achieved. So our six strategic priorities are self-government, language and culture, economic development, land property and housing, education, skills and employment, and health and social development. And for each one, we have stated objectives and a stated goal. These 10 statements about our strategic objectives, there's some very powerful words in here. Pursuing self-government beyond the Indian Act, for example. And teaching our young to be proud citizens with the skills to lead our nation into the future. So this is what we focus on, the kids promoting health, promoting happiness and prosperity. That's really why we're here. So our goal for self-government is to be a responsible, accountable, self-governing community with the legal authority, leadership, and capacity to determine and pursue our own interests. And I think we have that, we're just waiting for other levels of government to catch up and acknowledge that we have that. That right really exists with the, rests with the nation, it's unalienable, and it was acknowledged in 1867, and it's been acknowledged through the courts. We're just waiting for some sort of final tidying up of the legislation so that we can really exercise that jurisdiction. Some of the ways that we're seeking self-government is the modern treaty process, that's one way. We are at a table with Canada and B.C. and with four other nations, Sutu, Cheanu, Sinas, and Malahat. I think I slaughtered Snanas. Snanas?
Uh, that one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Naniw.
Naniw.
Yeah. There's, Snanaimo is Nanaimo, and I'm 23 years and I'm still learning the basics here. So we're seeking constitutionally entrenched understanding of self-government, land resources, and fiscal issues. We're not replacing the Douglas Treaty. This will not touch on things like fisheries, because that's already in place. All we're trying to do in that is negotiate some co-management of resource areas and that sort of thing. But this is really about land and about governance. We have an agreement in principle, so all of the basic points have already been agreed upon, but we're negotiating the final, some of the most important aspects of it, such as what will our property tax system be? Will we be able to continue under the Fiscal Management Act, or will we have to tax under an agreement with the provincial government, for example? If the negotiators and the council get a treaty offer that they feel meets what the nation's given them as a mandate, then this will be taken for vote by Songhais nation members. And this is, hopefully, we will know either way in three to five years, whether that's going to happen or not. Another way that we're seeking self-government is through the First Nations Fiscal Management Act. And we say that we're seeking through sectoral governance to get out from under the Indian Act. And that is, that means that where possible, where new legislation exists that takes over from the Indian Act, we jump on it. And one of them was the First Nations Fiscal Management Act. And that came into being in 2005 and into force in 2008, and Songhais nation was the first First Nation in Canada to pass laws under that legislation. So we had the first property tax, property assessment law, the first taxpayer representation law, and the first financial administration law in the country, and really in the world. Nothing like this has been done in other parts of the world. So we're quite proud of this legislation and of our, kind of the poster nation for this legislation. So we have other communities across the country looking at the model that we have. And it is partly due to this legislation that we were able to build the wellness center, is we were able to participate in debenture bond financing the way that a local government can. So we're able to use revenue streams, such as property tax and lease revenues, to secure debt. And what we were finding before is that banks wanted to treat us like a small business, and they expected collateral, and that just doesn't make sense. And they wanted a short amortization period, but we're talking about, you know, the wellness center, for example, that building's a 50- to 75-year building. It makes no sense to put a 20-year mortgage on it. So we successfully did that. So we're going to measure our success for self-government. In 10 years, we want to be no longer under the Indian Act. That is Chief Sam, Chief Ron Sam stated that goal. He said 10 years. After 10 years, we don't want to be subject to the Indian Act anymore. So by stating that, we're making that clear to government, too, that's our goal. And wherever there's an opportunity to get out from under the Indian Act, in any area we can, we do. And the Fiscal Management Act is part of that. We'll also measure how many members vote in our elections and our referendums, and how many participate in our general community meetings. We've got some targets there. We do have good participation in our elections, not so much in our community meetings. We hold them so regularly that folks are, they don't get pent up things, so they, you know, it's a sort of victim of our success, because we really would like to have more people at the meetings, because we really want things to be driven by community. But we do have a core group of very dedicated community members, such as Florence, who comes to every meeting, her family comes to every meeting. Language and culture, we seek to be a united community with a flourishing language and a reverence for unique identity, heritage, and traditional practices. So this one, for the longest time, we didn't state this as a goal, because as a government, we thought that's the people, and we're the government, and it's not our place to talk about what those things should be. But we're realizing that you can't separate the two, and that even though we have some non-members working in the office, it's very important to be grounded in culture and to use the language and to use practices, traditional practices, in the way that we hold meetings and the way that we conduct business. So we're working on that. And we're doing things like putting traditional food preparation in our health programs, language classes in our preschool, and various other ways that we can ensure that the language is revived and that the culture stays strong forever. And we can measure that by, we hope to have 25% of our members being functional Lakuanan speakers. We're not going to worry about who can write it and what phonetic alphabet they write it in. It is an oral language, we'd like to have 25% of our members able to speak it. Right now, we have one elderly gentleman that's fluent in Lakuanan and doing his very best to teach everybody. So we're, but it is related to the Tsunchasen language from the peninsula, and also there's a relation to Hakamalem. So those languages are spoken in the longhouse, and they can understand one another. But there are some unique things about the dialect of Lakuanan that we don't want to lose. And we have some wonderful recordings of people from 100 years ago, almost, that, actually, they started, there were people from them. They were elders when they started recording them in the 60s, 50s and 60s, so we have some really neat things. And we just want our community members to participate in events and to attend these traditional skill component projects that we have, and to participate in advisory committees. So we are more and more asking our members to step forward and participate in creating the future that they want to see. So for land, property and housing, we have a terrible housing shortage. We have overcrowding, extreme overcrowding, sometimes 12, 16 people in a two- or three-bedroom home. They're not built for that, and they do start, that's part of why we have mold issues, just from too many bodies in the space. So we hope to have a sustainable land base meeting current and future needs for cultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and community land use. So we have about, I think it's 360 acres right now. So we want to double that, we want to have like 650 acres. On other parts of Canada, the reserves are much, much larger than here on the coast. Songhais and Iskwa Malt, I think, have among the two smallest reserves in the country. So it's very difficult without a large land base to get anything done. So we are seeking to increase our land base, mostly through purchasing property, and that's what we've done when we can. The land use, so I mentioned earlier that we, our councils, over time have given out certificate of possessions to band members. That's the closest you can get to fee simple ownership on a reserve. The ownership stays with the crown, the queen owns it, really. But we have band members who have a plot, it's theirs to use any way they wish, as long as they follow our bylaws and laws. So many of them chose to put mobile home parks in. It was one of the only ways that you could generate revenue off your land in the 60s and 70s, but those parks are aging now, and the infrastructure is aging, and the mobile homes themselves are getting quite old. So we're starting a trust-low transition away from that, which of course, to the people that live in those parks is frightening, but it really, it's part of an evolution that will need to happen, so that half our members can't even live on the reserve, because there's not enough space for them. And yet we have 2,000 non-member tenants. So we have a land shortage. We're dealing with legacy issues from the Indian Act. In 2011, we took on the First Nations Lands Management Act, and this, similar to the Fiscal Management Act, this is legislation that replaces parts of the Indian Act, and in this case, large chunks of the Indian Act that refer to land. So we have a Songhais land code, and under that, we have lawmaking authorities, such as, we have a matrimonial real property law to ensure that any children at the dissolution of a marriage, any children living on the reserve in a home can live there until they reach the age of majority, whether they're band members or not. And that's something the Indian Act left a big gap in, so you have some, people have suffered over the years from that, so we sought to fix that. But with each of these laws comes a suite of responsibilities requiring growing staff. And as I watch this with other First Nations, too, that when they implement this, they need to build up their administrative infrastructure. And we're not funded very well to do that. So you sort of have to spend money that you don't have in order to put yourself in a position where you can start to earn it. So we've been preparing for two decades now, really, to get to the point where we are now, to have the ability to make the changes that need to happen for the community to be healthy and whole. So we'll measure our success by doubling the land base, and we'd like to have 60% to 70% of our members owning their own home and having that pride of ownership. The housing system set up by Canada Mortgage and Housing is really was, I don't know if they designed it to fail, but it certainly failed quickly and completely across the country. I've never heard one First Nation say that it's a good program that houses people. You don't get enough funding to build a house to standard or to code, so you start out with a substandard home, and they immediately mold, and they're immediately overcrowded. So we're struggling with that. I would say that we've been working on the health and social development front the longest. You know, we receive funding from Health Canada, now First Nation Health Authority, and we've been using that to bring services to our members to help them be mentally, physically, emotionally, and spiritually healthy. And so we have primary care clinics, nursing home care, community support, recreation programs, elders and youth programs, all designed to bring the community together, to have fun together, and to do healthy things together. So we're using quality of life measures that the province of B.C. uses, participaction guidelines. We also want to have no children in care outside of our community. That's really important to us, not one child. We want everyone to be home. And we hope to have our population equal to or less than the B.C. average for income assistance. I think we actually... I think we're actually maybe below the B.C. average right now. We do, we do have a very small number of people that are on income assistance at the moment, which is wonderful. Education, skills, and employment is so very important to get to where we want to go. We want to have an educated population, a skilled workforce, and full participation in the labor market. And we're really focusing on children to make that happen. And one of our success stories is Kwam Kwam Lelum after-school program. So kids come there, they get to run around in the gym and play, they get a healthy snack. And then there are tutors, who are students from the University of Victoria, that help them with their homework. So by the time they go home, their homework's done, their projects are done, they've had a snack, they've had some exercise, and they can have some real quality family time. And we, we know that that's going to impact the graduation rates for high school and the number of people that go on to secondary education. And so we're planning for, for that future. These young folks are going to take on the jobs that we have now and lead the community into the future. And we're measuring education skills similarly that others do, life literacy and numeracy skills equal to B.C. Completion rates, we'd like it to be eighty-five percent dogwood. Right now, most of our students get an evergreen certificate, so they're pushed through school, but they graduate without the skills to have a, a dogwood. So they're graduated, but they may have literacy issues. So that's a struggle that we have. We would like the kids to graduate from school with the skills they went there for. And we're working closely with the school district to make that happen, and they're a dedicated group of people. So we hope to have sixty-five percent of our, our population with post-secondary education, and ninety-four percent employment participation. Those are our goals. For economic development, we want to be financially self-reliant and prosperous and participate in the regional economy. And we really are making great strides in that way. In fact, I'm proud to say that we generate more income through own-source activities like businesses, leasing, and property taxation than we get in transfer payments from the federal or the provincial government. So we've turned the corner, and that, that is something to celebrate. One of our first companies we formed was Sailors Sea Industrial Services with Realmax Group of Companies. That's with the Isqyamalt Nation also. So it's a dredging and pile-driving company. And the Realmax Group of Company, group of companies does a great job of hiring folks into all of their companies. So we're very fortunate to have that business partnership with Ian Maxwell. We think very highly of him. Songi's Seafood and Steam. I'm, I'm sure you've seen our food truck around town. This started out as a partnership with Clipper Navigation, and we're very thankful to them. We wouldn't have been able to start it without them. But after a year in operation, we bought them out, as we wanted to tie this in more closely with our conventions and catering. And we also have a hospitality training program with Camuson College, and we have two, I think it's more than two Red Seal apprentices now. So that, that is something that's exciting, and we're constantly coming up with new places that want to buy our food. More, our kitchen's full of people working every day. It's really wonderful. Some of our economic development is through the Transport Canada Harbour divestiture process, the same process that created the Greater Victoria Harbour Authority. So we've been, Songi's and Isqyamalt has been at the table with Transport Canada for about fifteen years. And that has resulted in acquiring, through purchase, some properties, including the West Bay property, where West Bay, what was it, West Bay Investments did an RV park, and that lease expired, and we did not renew it. And we have, I was just checking it out today, the Sailors Seaside RV Park, fantastic. We really just raised the quality of the, of that site tenfold. And it's a beautiful clubhouse that we're building there, and we're very, very proud of that development. Well, we've got folks staying there now, but we're waiting till the building's done before we have a grand opening, but we'll be sure to let you know. And also, as you're aware, the Rock Bay property in, through Matulia Holdings, we own that. Currently, all we have there is a lease with the CRD for staging for the sewer treatment plant, and that's really helping us cover the carrying costs of that property until we determine a long-term use for it. And we also have a water lot adjacent to both reserves, where we have a small barge facility for Sailors Sea Industrial Services. So this is just another slide about the RV park. The guardhouse there, we've kept the integrity of that historic building, still has the jail cells in it, but we're also using it as an office and a gift shop. And this RV park can fit big rigs, the kind that need to drive through, or the kind that need to back in, or smaller ones. Almost every single spot there is waterfront. It's quite lovely. Songi's Wellness Center, that is, we built that as an economic engine, and it certainly has been one. We just recently turned our gift shop into a café, a gift shop café, and they serve breakfast and lunch, and it's doing very well, and we're all packing on the pounds. We have, we have like a full-time pastry chef in the building. And we do tours, and we hold conferences and weddings. And there's also a fitness studio. The public is welcome to come and purchase access to the fit studio. And our building is open every day. It's not seven days a week yet, but it will be soon. I think there were four events happening over, over this past weekend. The Songi's Nation Investment Corporation was created because of an incremental treaty agreement. So the province recognized that after twenty years of negotiating, we had nothing but a debt to show for that. And they gave each of the five bands in our treaty group a small pieces of property in order to generate revenue. And unfortunately, they, they haven't generated revenue so far. They've cost us quite a bit to hold on to. They, one of them was the PCC building. It's heritage. It's very difficult to lease that out as office space when there's all this brand-new office space in town, so it's been sitting empty, is generating a property tax bill. But the thirteen-ten Isqyamalt that used to be a liquor store, we leased that out to the Red Barn. And that was, we're very excited that we did that. We said no to some leases because it didn't fit with the township of Isqyamalt's community plan. We waited for the right tenant, because we wanted this property, it's right in the heart, and we wanted it to, to fit in with what they were hoping to see there. We wanted to be good neighbors. Songi's Nation Investment Corp. has just purchased a property on Lee Road, adjacent right, right there at the intersection. So it's the property as you're heading into the Bear Mountain Development. That's ours, and we're hoping that that is going to be a great development site. So we now own property in Langford, Victoria, and Isqyamalt. Songi's Tours, Inc. is our very newest company. We started that up, we were doing a pilot project this summer, and very quickly realized it's a good idea for insurance reasons, when you're taking folks out in, on the ocean, to have a separate corporation. So we formed Songi's Tours, and we are operating out of the Steamship Terminal. And that is partly an investment by the Greater Victoria Harbour Authority for their mandate to help the Isqyamalt and Songi's Nations in economic development on the harbor. So they have discounted the, the rent for the Steamship Terminal, so that we can run this pilot project in readiness for the Ogden Point redevelopment. And if you've, if you've been to the open houses, you see that there is an area that they've set aside for, this, this one says First Nation slash Community Entry. We're also calling it a village. It will be economic development. It will be something that tourists, it will be world-class for tourists, but it, it may have other types of, of economic development, like manufacturing, or canoe building, or something like that. So we're, we're, Songi's and Isqyamalt and the Harbour Authority are working together to figure out what we might do with that. And we're using this Guanang at Sailers, that means Helping Hands, development company as the, the vehicle for us to do that development. We will measure our success by having seven percent surplus own-source income, ten nation-owned businesses, I think we're halfway there. And we'd like to have five to ten percent of our community members owning their own businesses. There really is an entrepreneurial spirit at Songi's, and we're hoping to encourage that. One of the ways we're doing that is with an Indigenous Innovation Centre on the top floor of the Wellness Center, and that is a co-work space for small business, and also we'll have workshops associated with it. And we're going to be hosting a Regional Economic Development Forum for First Nations on the South Island, as we're realizing that we need, we're going to be a big employer, and we want to build the skills of Indigenous people throughout the region. And we know that they'll hire our folks, and we will hire their folks, so we might as well all pitch in in getting people trained. So our programs at the Wellness Center are for anyone. And that, this, I'm, I'm going to try again, Florence. Haichka tsiam naquilia. And that means, "Thank you, my respected friends."
Thank you very much, Ms. Clark. There's nothing formal here. We probably should have a motion to receive, just so we have that on the record. Second. Before I call the question, though, if there's any questions, Ms. Clark or Stick, I would take them at this time, otherwise we'll just say thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Zalka.
Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you so much for your wonderful presentation. It's really wonderful to see how, how governance works within, within, within the Songi's, and to reflect that, because if you were here for our previous meeting, we were talking governance, and it's, and one of the things we talked about was, was our general meetings, what are they going to look like? I'm curious, you, you say you have about twenty percent participation in your general meetings? And I pray that we get that as well. That would be fantastic. I noticed you referred to your core group of those participants who come to every meeting. You seem to speak to them in reverence, reverential, in, in good terms.
Yes.
It's kind of interesting. I, I wish we would do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And you know, even Florence is famous for grabbing the microphone at community meetings and expressing her displeasure. But yes, it is reverential, because that's community building. And it's through, it's through expressing what she'd like to see or not like to see that we shape the community. So we, we'd like to have more people like Florence come to the meetings and participate.
Thank you. Counselors Neay and then Counselor Kirby.
Thank you. Just one very quick comment. Thank you very, very much. I, I learned so many things from what you've shared, and thank you for the documents you've left with us as well. I'll comb through those more carefully when I have time. On the note of governance, one of the most, among the many things that I learned there as you were talking, this idea where you, at your council meetings, you keep talking until you have consensus. And, and I was thinking of that, you know, in comparison to our council table, because we work towards that, but we, we don't achieve that necessarily. And I think one of the things is, we'd be here forever, talking. And I, I just kind of care, like, do your meetings last a long time?
They can, they can run long, and sometimes we have to table items, because we, we don't get to them. There's also a very congenial atmosphere at the council meetings, a lot of humor and teasing, and that, you know, that's how they'll, they'll sort of haze a new council members through teasing and humor, so, but it rarely gets heated.
Wow, I'd love to come watch some of your meetings. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby.
Thank you. I just, again, thanks again for coming and, and sharing all this information. It's really enlightening. And I, I just wanted to express or reiterate my invitation to, to, as I sent by email earlier this week, to encourage you to join the UBCM, because we'd love to have this, your contributions there, and to be able to work collaboratively and learn from each other at the UBCM. That's a, it's a very powerful place for you to be, and for, it would be very powerful to have you there as members of the region.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. I'll put that on our council agenda for Wednesday.
Thank you. And in addition, I, I just was wondering that, I didn't, I, I mean, I guess we'll get to, to look through the documents, but I, I just was wondering if you'd, if there's any mention in here of Chatham and Discovery or Chess.
Yep. So what we're doing there right now is, we have a two-year, we've got some funding, a two-year program to do marine use planning. So that's going to include some community engagement around what, what do we want to do with the islands? Everyone agrees we want to protect them. It's a sensitive ecosystem. There's burials there. But we also want to get our folks out there more often, and we want to have a presence there, so that when other people are there, that we're, we're there to stop the fires. And it's difficult to exert your jurisdiction when we're just not there very often. But yeah, absolutely, they're, they're part of our planning. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, please, come forward and say hi.
I just want to say, haichka, guanestecho lakwangan talnoch. And I do want to reiterate what you just said in the beginning to welcome us. I just want to correct you. It is the Lakwangan people ownership of this land, and we, as First Nations, we tell people who we are and where we belong to. So it's Songi's that will tell people. We're part of the Ko-Sailish people. We're still here, and that's what I tell people. When you take that from us, you're acknowledging that we don't belong. So you always say, "Haichka, we are on Lakwangan lands. The Lakwangan people are still here, and I want to thank them, you know, for allowing us to live here on their traditional lands. These are very important places that we've had here. Stories, artifacts, our villages, Klachess, Discovery Island, which is right outside. You guys got a beautiful view of it." So I just want to say, I just want to correct that and put that in your guys' books, that you got corrected tonight. And it's us to say we're Ko-Sailish, but you just acknowledge the people, because we're here. And I'm here tonight to represent Songi's, to say thank you for allowing us to come here, come back home, to be part of this, and show our vision of our people going forward, and opening those doors to Oak Bay, and allowing us to see what happens in the future with the two nations and Oak Bay again, to connect. So haichka.
Thank you very much for that. Ms. Meir?
That, that acknowledgement at the outset is something that, that we've been using for a while, but thank you very much for your input, because I think what we'll do is, we'll work on that. I think we'd had some advice as to the phrasing of it, and if it's not completely accurate, we apologize. And you, you can be assured, it was, it was done with the best of intentions, and I know we, we consulted. And we will continue to consult to ensure that the, that the wording is correct. So thank you very much for pointing that out. I, I just wanted to say one other thing, and that's, that's a word of thanks. All of August, we had an absolutely wonderful display here, and the first time, I think, it's been used as, this council chambers, we had all the pictures off the wall, and we had a, the Songi's resilience of the people, a presentation and display here, an exhibit. It was so wonderfully received by people, literally from all over the world. And because people would, they'd come from, there's a hop-on, hop-off bus right out in front, and, and people would see the sign, and they would wander in. They were very impressed. And it's as a result of the cooperation between the Songi's Nation and the Bateman Gallery that we were able to, to have this exhibit here for the month of August. And it was a real honor for us. Our archivist put it together, our staff worked on it, and I think we had over five-hundred people drop in. It's the first time we've ever used these council chambers in that way, but I trust it's not the last. And I know one of the things that this council is committed for is building, committed to, is building that bridge we talked about between our people, and so our communities, and making it stronger and going forward together, all in the name of reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll call the question on the receipt. Allois in favor, opposed, not opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. With that, we're going to move on to item number two of the evening, and that is our Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission. I guess we have, is it Ray Herman and Monty Holding here to speak to the report and to receive the minutes? So first off, I'll invite Mr. Herman, I guess, if you want to come forward, if there's anything you want to highlight in the report, you're more than welcome to do so, otherwise we'll just take some questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a relatively short agenda, although there were a couple of items that generated a fair bit of discussion. The first, the first was a verbal report, actually, of one of the commission members who's got an interest in looking at our playground structures and ensuring that they're up to snuff, I guess. And that generated further discussion about the potential, or the potential need for a master plan of the playgrounds. That led to the discussion of the recommendations of the OCP, which suggests that a full-blown master plan for the department should take place, I think it was seven-plus years, and whether or not that recommendation should be enacted upon somewhat more quickly and encompass that playground piece, along with, of course, all the other elements of, of the department. So the direction to staff was to look at some of that information and bring it back to the October meeting for further discussion about the feasibility of moving the, the master plan forward. And of course, if the commission would like to do so, that would be a recommendation that would come forward to council. There was also a report from the deputy director with respect There was also a report from the deputy director with respect to the performance area at Turkey Head. I know that's not a new item for council, but that was discussed in the latest round of strategic priority discussions. And was, there was some work done in terms of ensuring what type of activity could take place there. But the Public Art Committee through the Arts Laureate had indicated they would like to move forward with establishing a performance area on that site. So what basically came out of the commission was a recommendation for council to consider that again, that project again, in the next round of strategic priority deliberations. And, you know, essentially what we talked about at the council table, or at the commission table, pardon me, was the idea of that being a two-stage effort. If it's approved at some point, the first step would be to essentially formalize a plan prior to construction taking place. We need to do some good work to ensure, you know, such things as where the utilities are, what's underground there before things start getting dug up and things like that. So that recommendation or that resolution was passed. There was also, at the request of council, there was a report that came forward to select a member for the Heritage Conservation Area Working Group. We did not, the person that the commission felt might be the best representative was not at the meeting. So that has been tabled until the October meeting, at which point the discussion will be resurrected. And other than that, it was just our normal monthly reports.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. Certainly beats the tradition of just nominating the people who weren't there for those kind of duties, so. I'll, is there any questions of Mr. Herman? The recommendation here, of course, is to receive the minutes, but also to, but also to separate out the Turkey Head portion of that for specific pieces. So Counselor Ne?
Thank you through your chair to Mr. Herman. With respect to the performance area that was discussed at the commission, I am disappointed that it's going to take so long because it won't come up to the strategic priorities till 2019 after the next election. And then, so we're looking probably three years to get that performance area. I guess my question, and I don't think there's any, this isn't a fault thing of anybody's. I guess it's just the process. Because at our previous strategic meeting, we did not prioritize the development of Turkey Head, though I didn't understand myself specifically that the performance area was contained within that. But it sounds like it did get packaged into that. So my question just at the commission, was it discussed how much money from the Arts Laureate? Because she had managed to amass a fair sum of money for the project. I think it was about 20 grand in money and, yeah, 20 grand. So it's not a money issue. It's a project issue with staff, I presume, is it?
Mr. Herman?
Through the chair, with respect to the funds raised, I know there was discussion about one particular donation of $10,000. I'm not sure how many smaller donations might be added to that, but that's the only significant donation that I'm aware of. Secondly, in terms of the work, I guess, staff have taken those strategic priorities and moved forward. So in order to add this to the work plan, I would suggest something else needs to come off. You know, we've had a fairly challenging year in terms of staff vacancies and illnesses and surgeries and what have you. We're going full out just to try and complete the work that we promised that we would complete. And to add some additional projects onto the list, whether they may be small or large, just exacerbates those challenges. And so that's why we're undertaking the process that we're undertaking.
Thank you very much. And I just appreciate you putting that on the public record for other people to understand what the challenges are for us all. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ne. Counselor Zelka, then Counselor Kirby.
Thank you very much, Chair. In addition to what I see on your agenda, it seems to me that the Parks and Rec has forgotten, amongst all the work that you've been doing, to pat yourself on the back. I heard at the meeting earlier on today that the district has achieved a carbon-neutral designation just this year, as detailed by the B.C. Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program, thanks to primarily the work of Mr. Olson, the Recreation Center, all the work that's been done within the commission, within the staff. I know, I know it's been also other departments as well, but just wanted to make sure that that message gets back to Parks and Rec and Culture.
I want to ensure that that's, that those comments are distributed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby?
Thanks, Chair. I just had two comments. One regarding, it just seemed timely to mention that I appreciate the daycare, including First Nations cultural education in their programming. It was noted in this month's report, and I just appreciate that. I think that we all share that vision and that's supporting the vision and encouraging our children and youth to understand that we're all working together towards reconciliation or reconciliaction. The other thing I wanted to mention was that, or question, was the childcare expansion of spaces. There's apparently, Henderson is either 12 or 13 more kids for the before and after-school care program. And first of all, I was just wondering if are the spaces full? Is it a successful program? And is that just due to a negotiation with UVIC because they closed some spaces?
Through the chair, as far as I'm aware, I mean, I'm not sure if there's any other factors there without going and talking to staff. But yes, we did have a negotiation with UVIC, and that has brought some more kids into the program. Overall, that program just every year seems to outperform the year past. And, I mean, it's amazing. I think it also speaks to the demand in the community. So, you know, we're continuing to try and utilize every space available to try and bring more and more kids and provide service to more and more families. But without looking at the details and talking with staff, I'd have to answer that in generalities.
Thank you. I'm assuming that it's full. I just wanted to clarify that whether there were net new spaces in Oak Bay for before and after-school care. And because if it was just transferring over of the after-school care program from UVIC that they closed due to changing their space configuration, I think they've increased their childcare spaces in order, or something. There was a sharing of space for some reason. And I appreciate, I want to applaud you for your efforts to continually find new spaces. That's, again, speaks to, I think, the vision of our community to support children and youth and their growth and development, just as the Songis did.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby.
I'll move the resolution as laid out by the Acting Director of Corporate Services.
Second.
Moving second. Thank you. Before we vote on that, I'm just going to invite anybody from the public who wishes to come forward and speak to council on the Parks and Recreation item. Seeing anybody running forward, that's probably a good sign. So with that, I'm happy to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed?
And then I'd like to consider a recommendation to refer the Turkey Head performance area to a future priority session, as a future priority session.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing any, I would just point out to Counselor Ne's point earlier, the 2019 timeframe, 2022 is the time that our leases agreement with the Mariners is up. So certainly, a big plan around all of that spaces is going to be forthcoming for sure. So thank you. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, which is the sewer cost recovery method. We have a report from the Director of Financial Services with a couple of small modifications. I also appreciate her sending around a collection of other jurisdictions and what they're doing and so forth. So thank you for that. The process here is, if there's any questions of staff, we'll go there. I do note that this topic has been raised a couple of times before. So in the interest of not spending hours on this, I think if there's new points to be raised, we'll take those into considerations, not to curtail any conversation, but that's just, I want to make sure that we're spending our time effectively, but also to keep an open mind because things do change with time. So I'll just seek, I guess, a quick, if, Ms. Carter, would you like to, Director of Corporate or Financial Services, would you like to give a quick overview of this?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just quickly, back in 2016, when we were setting the rates for water and sewer, I was asked to review and bring back a report with regard to how municipalities are charging sewers. And through that review, I can tell you, it really is all over the map. There's no consistent method. There's consumption-based versus taxes versus a flat fee. So it really is at council's discretion or committee's discretion.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? Counselor Zelka, or I'll just take questions initially, and then we can go to comments. Are there questions of staff?
Yes, thank you. As the CORD Water Commissioner rep, or the rep for Oak Bay on the CORD Water Commission, I noticed that the intent to, the incentive to conserve water is mentioned a few times within this excellent report from staff. And I just wanted to point out that the CORD, as a result, the CORD Water Commission, as a result of the excellent work that was done by previous members and by the mayor himself when he was on that commission, has an abundance of water. And one of the problems that that commission has right now is that water use is going down, which is in some ways forcing water rates up. And we also expanded our reservoir. So I think it's great that there's an incentive to conserve water, but we have a problem that other, many other jurisdictions don't have. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm listening to a lot of questions from Ms. Carter, so I'll take any discussion, and I'll then also open it up to the public for comment. Mayor?
Yeah, just, Ms. Carter, you circulated this municipal sewer methods. You're talking about it being all over the map, but is it, I note here that underneath each municipality, one of the first things is the issue of whether or not it's based on flat rate or water consumption and how they charge it after making that first decision, maybe all over the map. But it seems to me when you look at, and just correct me if I'm wrong, that the following communities use water consumption as the basis, in other words, volumetrically. Sanage, Victoria, View Royal, Assin Oak Bay, Langford, Central Sanage, and Sydney. And I count that to be eight. The ones that we're not aware of is Esquimalt. We don't have that information. I think it's a little difficult to find the information on our website, or Suk, although Suk is in transition. The only ones that are clearly flat rate is North Sanage. Is that my understanding of what this report's all about?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct. And when I said all over the map, it was based on a report or a review that was done a couple of years ago across the province, so not just.
Oh, the province, okay, not, but so, so that of the, and there are two communities that don't have sewers, so they don't have to worry about it, Machozen and Highland. So out of the 11 communities, my reckoning and count is that eight, including ourselves, base it on water consumption. Two are unknown, one is a flat rate. So that's a part of the mix. So, and the reason I point that out is if we're going to move away from water consumption, we're in fact moving away from what's the standard. And if I could say a few words about the question that, or the point that Counselor Zelka made. Yes, we do have a lot of water. And often we start, in most of the years, we start the season with a full reservoir. But here's the problem, and it goes back to 2000 to 2001. That year, we had a much smaller reservoir. Our rains at that year was only about, our winter rains is only about 55% of what it typically was over the 100-year average. We had a smaller reservoir, and we didn't really have a backup plan if we ran out of water. We had somewhat of a backup plan to pump from the north end, which has a deep well. But that was fraught with extreme dangers. The plan we didn't have is we could perhaps, and we did withstand one year of drought. But what happens if we had two years of drought back-to-back? Now, in the 100 years, that's a very rare incident, as I can recall. No question about that. But with climate change and the unpredictability of our weather, it's probably, you know, it's, in my opinion, it makes it more likely that we have, that we may have a drought, a winter drought, back-to-back. And if we do, our only backup plan is to start, having started the first year of that drought with a full reservoir. So if we turn now away from water consumption, we put ourselves in a difficult position that we had in 2000, 2001. We also saw Tofino, who hadn't enlarged their reservoir, actually almost meet economic disaster when they ran out of water. And I point out that Tofino is in a rain forest. And the reason they ran out, almost ran, well, they did run out of water, was because they have to capture it like us in the winter. So the reason water consumption and taking care with how much we consume is because we should have as much water on hand as possible at any given time to withstand back-to-back droughts. God forbid we should ever have it, but if we do, we will have that water on hand. And to now, if we turn away from water consumption, water conservation measures, which are embedded in the way we have structured this, then we create an unnecessary risk, in my view. And I think that's the reason why eight of the 11 communities, and two unknown for that matter, but eight communities versus one community, that's the reason they have that. It is water conservation. So I think we need a broader discussion if we want to turn away from that.
So I don't want to get too far into the micromanaging the CRD's water system here, but thank you, Mayor, for your comments. Are there, is there anybody else who wishes to make comments at this time? Counselor Braithwaite, Counselor Kirby?
Thank you. I think that it's very interesting that we've just had the hottest summer on record, and yet we're still at, what, 60% of the reservoir? Plus, we also have a full reservoir at Goldstream. I think to limit water usage and then raise the price of water for citizens is harmful to some citizens. When I look at our water bill, I think that we should basically just have water usage on our water bill and put all the rest on our tax bill. And I think that's how it should be, and I think that would help for families that have, that are, you know, like a family of five. It doesn't, if they're using a lot more water, it's more harmful for them the way we have it right now. So for me, I would agree with Counselor Zelka's comments about having, how much water we have in the reservoirs right now. I don't want to, I don't want to kind of go forward with any of these options here. I want to make a little bit of a change perhaps, so we'll wait and see what comes up from everybody else.
Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Chair. While I don't support excessive use-or-pay options, and I've expressed that in the past in other debates regarding our fee, setting of our fees for the connections and servicing, I see this as our best attempt at taxation fairness with careful environmental stewardship of the resource. And I've sat at the table, at the CRD water table, and heard those same concerns about the fact that our, you know, conservation efforts have been incredibly successful because we've attached it to the bill. But I would also support Mayor Niels's comments that, I think, and we have great, we have gratitude toward, to his leadership as chair of that committee, that we have the resource that we do, that we have the capacity we do in that reservoir, and that it was expanded in preparation for climate change, and that we will have longer, drier summers, and we've seen evidence of that this summer. Is no, not, no longer a doubt. It's real and it's happening, and that's going to continue. I think we need to... I think we need to continue that environmental stewardship, and this seems to be a very successful method. And I, so while I recognize that, you know, we don't want to leave the burden on all families, it will end up on the bill, taxation bill, you know, I think in equivalent numbers. I don't see this as being something that people can afford. You know, it's $100 a month, or every three months. It's not incredibly excessive, and, you know, there are other ways that we could, we can tackle taxation fairness, but I don't think this is one where there's a real problem.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the public and then I'll come back to council for more comments since there aren't any questions. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue at this time? I'm not seeing anyone, okay. Counselor Zelka, you had another comment to make?
Yes, thank you so much Chair. The whole definition of what's normal, I just wanted to touch on that for a moment. When we're not building a sewage treatment plant, situation normal is really you're only dealing with operational costs. And I think in some ways, some of the, some of the way we're dealing with sewage costs based on the usage of water, there's a case that can be made for that. But we, but that, that old situation normal is now gone. We now have a new situation normal where we do have to pay for these things known as capital costs. So I'm really very much looking forward to possibly a rejigging of these so that there would be an operational component and design it maybe the way we're doing it now. But with respect, in particular to the capital costs, the one-time costs, I would definitely like to see those being more equitably shared, especially in that, the last census showed we had so many vacant homes in this area, and I'm really concerned that with their lack of usage, that they won't be, for example, those homes in particular, just using that as one example, where they won't be contributing to the capital costs if we maintain status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've probably been, oh, Counselor Ne.
Well, I'll just say very briefly, a lot has been said already, but I, obviously, any taxation here, one's trying to achieve some taxation fairness and to incentivize water conservation. And as you go through these different topics, it's not, it's not straightforward, it's complex, but you plug one hole in one option and then another one springs open. And to use a water metaphor, I guess, but, and, but I think, all things weighted, given what's going on in the rest of the region, at this time, I'm fine to stay with the status quo.
All right, thank you. I'm in awkward position here, I think, as Chair, being probably the one who's been most adamant to have this brought back to consideration, and I'll try and just articulate why before we go to any, just any motions. You know, I think this is, you know, I think just for the record, raising this on a regular basis, it's just a reflection of the changes that have happened in the cost of the sewer costs as part of the bill. I believe frankly that the decisions made back in the early 2000s were the right decision to attach it to the water bill. I think it made a lot of sense. So I'll just try to articulate a little bit about why I think it's worth reopening right now, because I was having this conversation with my neighbor, Brenda, opened her water bill 15 years ago, it was pretty clear what it covered, right? Her water bill was water. She drank more water, poured more water, she paid for more water. 13 years ago, 2004, there was a change to put 70% of the sewer charges onto the water bill. Again, I think that was a logical decision. It added 4% or 5% to her water bill, but in fact, it was a fairly small rounding error in the overall cost of things, and didn't actually make any significant difference on that. What's really happened is two things simultaneously. 2010, a decision was made to move from the 70% of coverage or inclusion onto the, onto the water bill with 30% on taxes, and that was shifted to 100% over three years, so that 100% of taxes of the, also which charges attached to the C O D, capital costs were then moved on to that. So that was a change. If the cost had stayed the same, that wouldn't, still would have been a minor portion of the water bill. But of course, what, that didn't stay the same, like the C O D costs have gone way, way, way up in that, in the course of that time. The changes that has an effect, I mean, in the very short amount of time here, the water bill went from about 40 cents per unit in 2010, which is about 11%, 10% or 11% of the water bill, seven years ago. Today, that's over 200% of the total water bill is the sewer charges. So we're not charging the water consumption, we're charging, really, the vast majority of that is sewer, which we don't measure. We're not actually measuring that, right? There's a lot of different uses for water that don't necessarily go into the sewer. I'm not articulating that we remove it completely, but I think, to my mind, a fairer portionality of that, where we, again, maybe move back to that 70% model where we acknowledge that there's a fair bit of capital cost and so forth. The consumption costs are still going to be there, but it's not going to be quite so heavy on the, on the usage. The principle of user pay is an excellent one, but it's also a huge amount of fixed capital investment, as Counselor Zelka touched on, on that treatment plant. So it affects both operational costs and sewage treatment plants. I just look at this and I think of how we fund everything, and we tend to fund capital costs through taxation. We're doing it with the upland sewage separation, we're not putting those costs onto water charges. We do it with the large-scale water pieces. I think that is, that meets the other portion of good taxation. There is, there's user pay, but there's also clarity and transparency on these. And to my mind, this is kind of not clear that the billion dollars of capital cost at the sewage treatment plant is going to come, it isn't affected by our usage, it's affected tremendously by I N I in other aspects, it's tremendous, affected quite a lot by the sewage separation in the uplands, but the fact that someone pours a bit of water isn't changing the actual usage rates regionally. So to my mind, the better way of doing this is not to, not to get rid of the user pay portion of it, I don't think you should take it away from the water piece, I just think that the proportionality of it, now that it's taking up, and it's going to end up taking up 75% or 80% of the water bill very soon, is out of whack with the actual costs that are attached to it. And that's why I wanted to see this brought forward again, I think that that, that argument that says user pay is a good one. I'm not sure that the 100% of capital costs that are going to be fixed no matter what we do, attached to consumption, you know, when the water bills are getting up to such a large portion of it, and there are often, as Counselor Braithwaite pointed to, families and so forth that have kids and are washing clothes all the time and so forth, is that really necessarily that the people that we're targeting are people with gardens that are watering and so forth? I do see conservation as an important part, it's a key part of this whole piece, I wouldn't suggest we take it away. But to my mind, a bliser course of action would be for staff to come back with a couple of other options that we could, I don't want to get into the suggestions tonight, but I would say that I would like to see a motion that says, we recognize that some of the capital costs maybe should go away from the 100%, maybe back to more of the 70% type model, and what would that look like to the changes in the water bill and to our taxation? So that would be my motion, not to make anything specific, but personally, I feel that, that is not transparent or particularly fair, as it is right now. Thank you. Counselor Kirby?
I'm confused. When you say that capital costs are generally paid for through taxation in this municipality, I think you're overlooking what we just, we just agreed upon an increase in the servicing costs for storm sewer and water, and those are, those entirely fall on the user for reconnection. I mean, when you need a new connection to the sewer, it's entirely on the Oak Bay resident homeowner to pay that fee. It's not, it's not a shared cost, and it's prohibitive for most families. It's not $100 a month, it's $6,000 or more per service. And so I think that's a misconception, I don't think that that's a fair, fair statement to say that, that we do that traditionally, because I don't think we do.
I would say it's not consistent across the board, but that example you give is a, is an individual household, getting an individual service to that household, that is not a shared infrastructure. That is the cost for that hookup to that single house. So I think that's a fair difference in terms of those capital costs and how they're, how they're paid for. Counselor Kirby?
But I would suggest that it's, that it's, if you're paying your water bill, it's your consumption, and the, it's encouraging conservation within the household, it's not, it's not a shared service. It's your own water and your own sewer that you're paying for on your bill. It's your water consumption that you pay for, right? We've just talked about that. No?
Yes, I'm not sure I follow the argument...
Well, you're saying that it's yours sewage, you're, sorry, your connection fees, yes, it's for your house, yes, it's for your use, and so is your water bill, it's based on your use. It's your house, your use. It's the same thing, I think it is apples to apples.
I'll respond to that, because it seemed to be, to my question, I, the difference there, I think, is that we have a shared infrastructure of a sewage treatment plant coming up, with the costs are large in capital and shared in fixed, they're not tied to usage and so forth. Our overall municipal bill, which is split, is based on usage, which is why I would advocate that we still tie it to water consumption. I think that the 100%, personally, I think 100% is excessive when it takes up such a large portion of the water bill. If that was, if in the time it was originally implemented, I thought it made sense. Mayor Johnson?
Just two small points, Chair, and that is to do with, we do take into account that some of the water going into, into a house may be used as garden water. So, you know, where there is a factor in that already that we consider. But secondly, when this change was made in 2010, it was made, as I can recall, in contemplation that there would be capital cost rising at the C O D. By that time, the whole sewage treatment issue was well on the, on the track and moving forward. And the C O D was, I think, recognizing that there would be a very significant outlay in capital, and that was reflected, as I can recall, the debate at the time was reflected in what we decided here at this council table. So I don't really think there's been any change, except for the reality that we are going ahead with it. So I think perhaps there's some of us around the table in 2010 maybe hoped that at some point, we wouldn't have to have sewage treatment, but now it's a reality. But we contemplated that reality when we made that change, as I said, to the best of my recollection. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I think the appropriate thing here, not to beat the dead horse, if I maybe have a motion on the table, either to just receive the report or to make a motion to come back with some options, I would appreciate that, we can have a vote and move on.
Move receipt.
Seconded. Just for, as a matter of procedure, we move receipt and move on, that, does that preclude us from having a second motion to do something, or is it? I don't like turning, defeating motions to receive, I guess is my point.
Acting Chair, in, as the report is written, there are two options before council, that the report be received for information and that staff be directed to either leave the current methodology in place or change the method for calculating and recovering sewer costs, or that the report be received for information. You may wish to clarify with the mover in the secondary, if they're pursuing the second option, that the report be received for information, the implication is that there would not be further information forthcoming from staff.
Okay, well, I'll take that, I'll just, is it okay to deal with them as separate motions, if someone wants to put a second motion, is that, as opposed to doing an "and", is that okay?
Acting Chair, I'd suggest that perhaps you clarify with the mover in the second or what their intention was of this particular motion.
Okay.
To receive the report?
And do nothing else?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
So could that, maybe it's better if that would be made express in the motion, and to receive the report, this is a suggestion, and to take no further action at this time.
Yes. I'd agree to that wording.
Prove it beyond mischief if that...
Sure. I always prefer motions that do things as opposed to sort of hit that they don't do things, but I'll take this and we'll work with it. The implication here is, if this is passed, then that would be the case. Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Ne.
Well, I appreciate the information you provided, Counselor Murdock, and I hadn't heard that detail of argument and the history tied together the way you did there. And so in this instance, you know, I've read through this report carefully, and it hasn't got the information you've spoken to, and I found many of the points you made to be compelling, but I would like more information to understand this from a staff perspective. So I will be open to sending this back to staff for more information with other options. So I'll turn down this receipt at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Braithwaite and Counselor Zelka?
I would say exactly the same, I'm going to have to vote against the motion, because I would like to see staff come back with some more information for us.
Counselor Zelka?
Similarly, I'll be voting against this. I am very interested in hearing if there are other options that are open to us, and since we'll be resetting the tax rates at the end of the year, very for the next year, I'd like to have some more information, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I'll call the question, all is in favor. Opposed? So Counselor Ne, Zelka, Braithwaite, and Murdock, opposed. So then can I have a motion of some sort to direct staff otherwise?
I will make a motion to direct staff to provide more information in the chain, to change the method of calculating and recovering sewer costs.
I can second that, thank you.
Does that work?
Just for clarification, I think, just, I want to get a sense of intent, we're informal enough here, we can do this. Is this essentially to ask staff to come back, we say a couple of options for us to sort of look at and see if they would make more sense?
Yes, that would be my intent.
And what that would actually look like on a tax bill and a water bill, is that, is that the intent of this?
Yes, please.
Okay, is that good enough, staff? I'm seeing some worried looks on your faces.
Through the chair, it would be helpful if we had a couple of suggestions, for example. I'm assuming at this point that the consumption-based method is what would come back, and are you looking for possibly a different percentage split?
I think it would be, to my mind, and I'll make a suggestion if council agrees to this, one, just simply taking a percentage of those costs back down to 70%, and maybe just, perhaps another option is, would be looking at just putting a fixed, more of a fixed cost for, towards the capital pieces and the balance of it towards the, on taxes. I think those are sort of other logical things that have been done elsewhere to kind of reflect the capital cost in some way. But I think I would frankly rely a bit on your expertise and knowledge to come back to us with things that you think would make, would make reasonable sense. It's just easier for us to debate something that's more tangible than a, than a generality, so is that sufficient?
Yes, thanks.
Is counsel's agreeable to that as a general?
Yes.
Okay. Some general nods here, okay. So we have a motion on the table, is there any other discussion?
Just have a question for Ms. Carter. What are the timelines in terms of us setting sewer and water rates for next year? When is that typically done? Could you remind us, please?
Yes, typically those are done in November.
Okay. And my next question is, will, I mean, this is a fairly complex analysis, and will we be in a position to do that, to do all of that analysis plus the debate and have November rates ready, realistically?
It would certainly be a challenge. If that was the request of committee, I would suggest that the discussion come back again at rate setting with the two different options to consider.
But the, there may be more than two options, the on and off kind of thing, and there may be other halfway houses to the halfway houses. So I think waiting to the rate-setting meeting, I think, would probably leave it too late in case we want to go to, if we're presented with Plan A and Plan B, but at the rate-setting we decide on Plan C, it'll be too late in the game to set those rates for the coming year. Is that a fair comment?
Yes, that is a fair comment.
Which means that I think we have to have a schedule of the report coming forward, decisions being made in advance of that rate setting.
If I may here, since this is largely my doing, I recognize that these costs are going to be paid by taxpayers when we're together, this model's been in place. I'm not fussed that it gets pushed off, you know, and we take it and we look at it. At the end of the day, this is largely a philosophical decision about whether we think it's better, more transparent and more fair on one method or another or what that split is, so I just look forward to that coming back, and I don't think I would feel comfortable pressuring staff to come back in a massive hurry to get this done by November. So if committee's welcome, okay with that, then I'm comfortable with letting staff bring that back. Appreciate, it would be nice to do it for 2018, but that doesn't seem like it's very reasonable, given that we're sort of getting to it in September now, so, and we have no more meetings this month, so. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much Chair. In my earlier comments, when I talked about the rate settings coming up for, in the future, I did not mean to imply that there's a rush, a rush on this for this particular upcoming rate-setting process. What I'm hoping to see is that this simply get attended to, and it get attended to in good measure. And if staff needs more time, then the time be taken so that we have a good analysis. That's all, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sufficient, okay. Thank you. Sufficient? Okay. Have I called the question on the I haven't yet on the so any other discussion? Seeing now, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? To oppose, Counselor Kirby, Counselor Croft. Thank you. Crossing out where we're going to move to. Item number four on our agenda is the first of three applications for heritage revitalization agreements. The first one is 2031 Runnymede Place. I know the applicants are here. I see them in the audience. The process here is I'll do allow our acting director, Building and Planning, Deborah Jensen, to do a quick overview. And then the applicants are welcome to come forward and just maybe perhaps frame this application in your own words. And I understand you have a presentation. So if you want to go through that, or if you want to just refer to it in answer to questions, you're welcome to do either. And then we'll take questions from counsel and the public. So Ms. Jensen, would you give a quick overview of this application?
Thank you, Chair. So this application is for a heritage revitalization agreement and a heritage alteration permit to restore the existing home on the property at 2031 Runnymede. It would also include removing an accessory building, constructing a detached garage, and creating a second single-family lot on the northern portion of the property. So just briefly, to describe the process, the the local government act contains provisions for a heritage revitalization agreement. It's a means of allowing redevelopment of a heritage property while still respecting the heritage character. It can set provisions within the agreement, for example, terms and conditions, items such as use and density, which then take precedence over other municipal bylaws, such as the zoning bylaw. So its primary intent is to preserve the heritage home, but still allows for some form of benefit to the owner. However, having said that, the provisions of the agreement must be agreed to by both the owner and the municipality. So as background for this site, 2031 Runnymede is listed on the Oak Bay Community Heritage Register, and it was designated by Heritage Bylaw in 1980, which protected both the lands and the existing home. The statement of significance that was prepared at that time has been updated in 2015, which made modifications to some of the character-defining elements of the property. The home itself is known as Blair Gowie, which is an Italian Renaissance revival home, was designed by Samuel McClure for a member of the Bouchard family. Since the application was received, the Heritage Commission has reviewed it and suggested that the the some of the land features, for example, the rock walls, should be included in the statement of significance, and suggested that any new structure should reflect the heritage character of the existing home. Their recommendation was to consider allowing for a two-lot subdivision and restoration works for that property, but indicated additional direction in that the property should be subject to a no-future subdivision clause. So staff have been reviewing the application with respect to OCP policy, neighborhood context, green space servicing, and heritage preservation. Staff are now requesting counsel direction as to the options outlined in the report.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dur, welcome in. Ms. Hillyer, are you are you wanting to come forward? It's probably worth putting just saying your names officially on the record at the thing and writing them down. Did you want to speak to the slides before we begin and do a quick overview?
Do you want to speak to the slides first?
I could do that if you like.
Sure.
How do I make them turn over? Here? Okay. Okay. These slides aren't in any particular order. I just thought that not all counselors have been through.
So could you share your name with this?
Oh, I'm Bruce Welkin. I live at 2031 Runnymede Avenue. I just wanted to bring counsel and counselors that have not been through the property up to date on some of the things that we've done to the property since we've taken possession of it. So that slide that we're looking at right now is the the rear patios that we had extensive drainage problems in the house, and we were had a lot of flooding over the last couple rainy winters. So we put in a very, very large patio in the back that now is collecting water and draining the water away. So having done that, we've been able to to solve our flood problems in in the basement. So that's been done. We've done the the roof on the house, and we've done all the flat roofs on the house. We've done the restored the fascia boards, and we've restored the gutters on the house, and we've repaired all the plaster work on the outside. We're in the process of painting the house right now. We're about eighty percent painted at this point. So we're working our way across the the front facade on Runnymede Avenue and then down the the south side. And hopefully, if the weather holds out, we'll we'll be complete this year. We've repaired windows where necessary, repaired and replaced doors where necessary. We've done extensive landscaping on the property. Anne and her team have restored the property as close as we can to probably what it might have looked like in the nineteen late the late teens and nineteen up to the the house was built in 1916. So early years when the Butchards owned the property and had extensive rock gardens and landscaping. When we took over the property, the the yard was completely devastated and dead and run over with deer, invasive species, ivy, that sort of thing. So Anne has worked really, really hard to restore the garden, and it's now looking quite quite beautiful. This is a view from the front of the house. You can see that they're not painted yet, but all the balustrades have been restored. They were all rotten. So we took it completely down to the roof, restored it, and put them all back on again. With I don't know if you here's another picture of the garden that's been that Anne's been working on. This is another picture of the back patio that we've done. You can see we've been doing some landscaping and have added some arbers and garden structures just to give a bit of privacy in the backyard and create the that sort of Italianate villa look that the house intended originally. Another picture of the garden, you can see the pond's been restored down there. This area was completely covered up. None of these rock walls were visible when bought the property. It's now been cleared of ivy and those invasive species. So on the inside, we gutted the house pretty much to the bare walls. We re-insulated it, replumbed it, rewired it, redid the heating system, restored all the existing radiators in the in the house. They now work. The electrical has all been done right out to the street. We have eight fireplaces in the house. They've all been restored, the mantles, all the facings of the fireplaces have been redone. We made a decision to convert them to gas just because we couldn't see hauling wood to eight fireplaces was particularly practical, and we wanted to be energy efficiency, energy efficient. And on that note, the house, we've put in a really sophisticated boiler system that runs domestic hot water, runs the heating system, and partitions for underfloor heating in some areas where we couldn't have radiators. And over this past year, the house has been incredibly efficient to heat. So it's about 8,000 square feet, but our heating bills were about $250 a month, and that included our hot water. All the floors in the house have been restored. We we restored all the original locan floor floors in the house that came up beautifully. They've been carpeted for many, many years, so that really helped for them to be in the condition that they're in. We have five bathrooms in the house that have all been gutted to the bare walls and restored. For the most part, it's has a very strong heritage feel, but we have some very modern elements in the house as well. Again, this is picture of the staircase. This is picture of the bottom of the staircase. We completely someone in the 50s had put in a wrought iron railings and something that wasn't really in keeping with McClure. I found one little piece of railing that was in the back staircase. So based on that, we were able to create a complete new railing system in the house. So it's very much the way it would have been in 1916 and what I think McClure intended for the house. That's a picture of the staircase that's been restored. You can see the the railings and the all of the plaster paneling that was in the house had been destroyed by coming over with grass cloth and ranch paneling and that sort of thing. So we took it all back, resurfaced the whole house, and then recreated the paneling with and all of the door casings, all of the door hardware, all of the lighting fixtures. We found heritage fixtures were possible through pieces like water glass, put those back into the house. So again, the house is is back as close as we think it could possibly be to 1916, but still be a modern, comfortable house to live in. This is picture of the library, and that's another picture of the library. This tile floor is is all new. We salvaged some of the wood from this area and put it into the kitchen. So we had heritage oak floor through all of the house, except this areas that area here that we have re-tiled. Just a picture of one of the bedrooms that's been restored. This is a picture of the living room. These beams, the beam ceiling was not originally in the house, but I have restored a number of McClure houses, and I stole a few things from his playbook to to make it as McClurish as I possibly could. This is picture of our dining room. We had a bit of fun with the light fixtures. It's got some very modern elements in it. We have quite a big art collection. So the house is all painted white throughout. Another picture of the dining room. Again, the kitchen was 1950s, really, really poor shape. So we built a brand-new kitchen. But again, heritage light fixtures is very much in keeping. We took the clues from the Butler's pantry so that the the kitchen very much reflects the Butler's pantry pantry that we restored. There's a pitch, and that's the original Butler's pantry that we removed, restored it, and then put it back in the house again. Here's another. This is a powder room on the main floor, which again, we gutted and restored it to a very traditional-looking new bathroom. And just the last three slides are the area of the property that we have not restored, and that is now holding us up from continuing with our landscaping, making decisions about how to move forward with our property, is what we call the cabana. And this was a playhouse for the kids, and it also for I had it held all the pump equipment for the pool, which is now derelict. So that is from Runnymede Place, looking at the cabana. This is the cabana from the back, and this is the back of the cabana as it looks now. So it's just a pretty much a derelict building, and the rock pile that you see to the left is what was a very small pool that has been decommissioned. So that's what we've been doing for the last three years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A bit more?
I just wanted to add a couple of things to what Bruce has said. My name is Anne Hillyer, and Bruce and I, as he said, own the property at 2031 Runnymede. We purchased the property in 2013, and we've lived there since 2014. And as you know, the property and the the house and the property that it rests on were designated by the bylaw in 1980. The house itself, the residence, which is designated is about has about a 29-plus foot hundred square foot footprint, but the property itself is about 55,000 square feet. So it's a significant parcel of land, particularly when you're trying to weed it. We when we purchased the property, it was really the subject of quite a lot of deferred maintenance for a long period of time. And so on top of having had a fairly unsympathetic renovation in the 50s, which took away many of the interior character-defining elements, it had really suffered from deferred maintenance on the exterior of the property and in the house itself, as well as the land. So since we moved in in 2000, well, since we bought it in 2013, we've been working really quite steadfastly in trying to deal with all of these aspects. And we have made a significant investment in the restoration and the rehabilitation, both of the property, the house on the property and the land itself. So at this stage, we are largely finished the work of the house itself. There, as Bruce said, we're still painting it. There's still some things to be done. But we've carried on since 2013 with that work, and so we've made significant progress. The garden is certainly underway, but it's only a portion of that is really restored to a garden state. There's still lots to be done. And you can see in these pictures on the north side of the property, where we're hoping to create a new lot, there there's still a significant work to be done. We started on the south side, and we've been walking, working our way across the property. So in 2016, in April, we brought an application to Oak Bay to enter into and negotiate heritage revitalization agreement, and in our hope that we would be able to negotiate with the community to continue with the restoration and rehabilitation of the house in exchange for our being able to take off a portion of the property, create a lot that would be about 8,500 square feet, that would hopefully defer some of the expense of the restoration of this work, which has been significant. We went into it with our eyes open, but we're hoping that a portion of the land can contribute to some of the cost of the work that's been done. You know that a heritage revitalization agreement is a very flexible instrument. It allows the municipality and the owners of property to really negotiate a whole range of things. And it includes the capacity to be able to include in the agreement things that would be dealt differently in other bylaws. You can negotiate around the whole property for the exchange between the two parties in relation to what each of the parties wants to get in relation to the property. So just to highlight some of the things briefly that we would like to see in the heritage revitalization agreement, it would be to continue and complete the restoration and rehabilitation of the exterior of the principal residence, although, as I said, most of that work has been completed. Continue with the rehabilitation and redevelopment of the landscape, which there still is a significant portion of work that needs to be done. Create a new lot on the north portion of the land that would be about 8,400 square feet. That would retain in the exist attached to the existing house, a lot of about 40, just about 47,000 square feet. So still a significant portion of land. It would also, in our application, we asked for you to consider making a lot line adjustment in the southeast corner of the property. We have a neighbor behind us that has a fence that doesn't that's not actually on the property line. We had the property at the east portion of the lot line surveyed, and it turns out that the fences along the way are inside our property a number of feet. And it's not a huge portion of land, but it is an area that, in the case of the southeast neighbor, they've really gardened beautifully. There's a little rock wall. It's, you know, they've they've invested significantly in that portion of their yard. And so they've asked us if we would consider adjusting that lot line so that they would be able to retain that garden area for their property. And so when we talked to staff about this at the at the inception of our application, your current then-director of planning suggested that we include it in the HRA application, so it be considered at the same time. We also have asked for the to permit the siding and the building of a new garage on the north for the existing house on the north side of the property, because the cabana, you can't see here, has an existing garage now that's not really up to modern standards, but it would be gone. And so we would like to be able to build on the remaining portion of the land attached to the existing house, a new garage that would service the existing house to the north of the house. It would be a standalone building. And we also are asking that the HRA allow and permit the inclusion of the suite that already existed when we bought the house in the lower portion of the house. I don't know when that suite was created, but it's our understanding that the previous owner of the house, Pamela Ellis, actually spent the last few years of the time that she occupied the house, living in that suite, because she had difficulty with the stairs in the house. The houses, you have to go up a set of stairs to get anywhere in the house. So I guess that became difficult for her, and she lived in that suite. So we would like that suite to be one of the things that the HRA would permit. So the some of the key elements, and I'll be brief with this, is that we would like the HRA to include a provision that confirms that the restoration and rehabilitation of the heritage residence would conform to the standards and guidelines for the conservation of historic places in Canada, so that the ongoing work to this house would be done in the spirit of those guidelines. A provision that would allow for the possible construction in the future of auxiliary garden structure that conforms to the the current zoning bylaw. We don't anticipate at the moment building garden structure in the back, but we'd like the permission to have the capacity to build a garden structure at some point, as long as it conforms with the zoning bylaw. We would like the provision allowing for the construction of the garage that I mentioned earlier, and we would anticipate doing that sooner rather than later. I mentioned the suite. We we want there to be a provision in the agreement that the owners are obligated to continually protect, maintain, and conserve the exterior of the heritage house, an obligation that would run with the land and bind future owners. You know, it's interesting that the house and the land were designated in 1980, but there was no mechanism to maintain the property over the years. And so the land was overrun with invasive species, and the house had deteriorated really quite significantly in the last few years. So the benefit from an HRA over designation, I think, is that you get this ongoing commitment for all owners of the property to do to undertake and maintain the house in that state, so that you get a house that's been rehabilitated like this, and you get the benefit of that over a number of years. Obviously, the HRE would incorporate any variances that were required to permit the the new house on the new lot, the new subdivided lot. And it would include drawings for the house so that there was some assurance that the design of the new house was in keeping with the existing structure. And you have in your drawings, in your package, I believe, some of those site drawings that we submitted. And the final thing that I just And the final thing that I just wanted to mention is that I personally think that the, if the new lot were, if you approved the new lot, um, the existence of a new lot, that it would be important to not have it retain its heritage designation on the land itself. The new structure, of course, would not be a heritage structure. There is no historic value to that portion of the property. There's no particular reason to maintain that heritage designation. And I think that when there isn't a reason for land to be designated heritage, it causes confusion to people about what can be done and what can't be done, and often that leads to delays that are not beneficial to the land itself. That's been our experience, when there's been confusion about how to deal with the land, and it leads to delays, it interferes with the productivity of getting the land back in better condition. So that would be my hope, that we would be able to deal with that. Um, I, I don't think I have anything else to add, and if you have any questions for us, we'd be pleased to answer them.
Thank you. We probably, I'm sure there will be some questions. Uh, I probably just gonna throw this back to Ms. Jensen, though. Is there anything that you wanna just touch on based on, on that? Is there anything that you wanna highlight that isn't being done or is being done as part of that list that Ms. Hillyer put forward?
I believe a lot of the items, uh, that Ms. Hillyer mentioned are, are already included in the staff report. Uh, she did mention removing the heritage designation from that portion of the site, which is something that staff could move forward with if council wanted to entertain that as well.
Thank you. Uh, all the questions of staff or the applicants at this time from council? Uh, Council Kirby, Council Nee, and then Council Brithwaite?
Um, I just have a question for staff with, with regards to our options, um, just so I fully understand, um, the difference between option one and option two. I, I, option one, to me, is that we would, uh, pass this back to staff to complete an agreement that you would bring back to council? And that, and the option two seems to say the same thing. And so I'm a little confused what, what the difference is between option one and option two.
Uh, through the chair, option one is really intended to address all of the items that are set out in the staff report. If, option two is if there's anything else that, uh, council has, has any concerns with, we could go back and bring those forward in a subsequent report as well.
Okay, so if there's anything that's raised tonight, that's option two, but if we're, uh, content with the list that's presented in the report, um, then option one.
Essentially, yes. The one is move forward as, as put forward, uh, or if there's small minor changes, we can make those changes, uh, at this point and, and move it to go forward. Uh, if there's substantial changes, it's better for staff to work with the applicant directly as opposed to trying to do it at this table. Uh, so we would just articulate those and put it back, and options would be denied. So this is sort of the three options on the table. Uh, then I have Council Nee and Council Brithwaite?
Yeah, through your chair, uh, to staff, um, uh, thank you for working with the applicant on this. I, there's been significant progress, and, um, you've laid this out very clearly for us. Thank you. Um, my, my question actually has to do with, um, you mentioned in your report that there have been some community inquiries about the property, or, uh, what, what exactly are people asking about?
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, through your chair. Uh, really, the bulk of the inquiries have been around, um, the possibility of doing the lot line adjustment. As Ms. Hillyer mentioned earlier, along the rear, there is some concern from some of the adjacent residents about, uh, taking that large piece of property and, and subdividing it to allow that smaller lot.
Thank you.
And, uh, Council Brithwaite?
Um, I just wanna be clear that we're actually not voting on the subdivision tonight, just to be clear for everyone, right? We're only, um, voting on the heritage revitalization agreement, correct?
We're actually, we're not finalizing that, but it's, we're essentially moving it down that path of subdivision and approval, 'cause this is all part of one, one big, one big piece, the subdivision, all these pieces. So the question for us as a body tonight, and I'll get confirmation from staff on this, but really is just that we're articulating as a body, as committee, what it is that we're gonna say is, is appropriate from, from this, from this body's position. So it includes subdivision, includes all of that, so it was one cohesive package, is the revitalization agreement. Is that fair, Ms. Jensen? Is that?
The heritage revitalization agreement would really be that first step towards looking at a subdivision for the property. Is council in agreement with, with, uh, what the applicant is proposing to do on the site in exchange for the continued preservation of that site? To date, staff don't even have a subdivision application in receipt.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I, I think that the house looks beautiful, so thank you very much for all the work that you've done so far, and I'll be interested to hear other comments as well. Thank you.
Mayor Jensen?
Just to confirm that understanding, so the actual subdivisions would be embedded uh, in what we would do tonight to move it forward, and then the rest of it would come back at, at a more, uh, formal basis, but, uh, we're giving, how can we put it, preliminary approval, maybe, uh, in principle?
In principle, to move forward with the application so council can subs- subsequently consider the agreement and any designation bylaw.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Uh, Council Zelka?
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair. Uh, a question for staff. Um, since the new lot is less than ten thousand two hundred square feet, which I understand is the approximate or minimum size of an RS four lot, is this why, um, uh, I guess, I, I presume this means we'll need to have, uh, some sort of an amendment to the official community plan to allow the RS five in that area? So I wanna know whether an OCP amendment is required as part of this?
Ms. Jensen?
Uh, to clarify, no OCP amendment is required. Uh, we would not be amending the zoning bylaw either. The heritage revitalization agreement would take precedent over any of the other bylaws.
Thank you. Uh, Council Croft?
Yeah, and, and I guess, th- through you chair to Ms. Jensen, um, I guess that means the same thing for the suite then. It, it, it's encompassed within that revitalization agreement.
Correct.
Okay, I have a couple of quick questions. Um, the, the concern about the garden, um, I'm not entirely clear, there is a statement of significance that existed from nineteen eighty that included, uh, the new one that's, uh, with the Donald Luxon report. Does that supersede it and remove the garden from the statement of significance, or does that get carried on in some other way, or, I just wanna know what, what the look of that would be?
So the original, the original, uh, statement of significance that was prepared for this site did include, uh, a number of character defining elements that were not carried forward through the draft statement of significance. So for example, it did list some interior features. Those interior features were never designated through the bylaw, and it did list, uh, a series of terraced rock gardens on the lands. Those pieces were not carried forward through to this draft statement of significance. That draft was prepared with the application, but is, it is nothing that council has yet endorsed.
Understood, okay. So that, again, forms part of the bigger, uh, HRA agreement, is the approval of that, that statement of signif- revised statement of significance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had was, uh, there was mention of, uh, by the applicants of, of, you know, having something in here that obligates the owner to maintain the house? Is that actually a vi- I mean, how do we force people to maintain a house? I guess is my question on that. It's always the goal of heritage, we have grants available to help, we have all these kind of things, but what would be the mechanism there to, of enforcement? I'll, I'll ask the staff, and if you can answer as well, if you wish.
That is something that you could include in a clause in the heritage revitalization agreement. It is a, a standard policy that you would attach as part of that. Uh, in terms of how you monitor that, there are different ways to do it. Uh, some municipalities actually have a specific heritage program set up that they can continue to monitor those, monitor those agreements. Uh, it's nothing that we have formally set up at Oak Bay, but we do try to keep on top of it.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess I'd probably ask that of the, um, of the applicants as well, 'cause it is absent from that, and I know you guys are doing wonderful work restoring that garden. Um, you know, in your mind, what's an appropriate mechanism of both recognizing the value of the garden as now being so painfully restored, and, and mechanisms for protecting that?
Uh, one of the real advantages, in my view, of using an HRA to protect property over designation is it gives you the ability to negotiate terms that, of course, every agreement needs to be enforced to be effective, but it gives you the capacity to include in the agreement those kinds of terms. The designation doesn't do that at all, and hence you could have a designated property that falls into disrepair without any mechanism available to you to do anything about it. Doesn't mean you would enforce it necessarily if you, unless you saw it as a priority, but if you saw a house falling into disrepair and you were worried that there was gonna be an application for demolition, you might take steps long before that to ensure that the owners were made aware of their ongoing obligations. So like any agreement, you can put those kinds of provisions in, in the hope that people will honor the agreement in the future. And because the agreement runs with the land, you have the capacity to have new owners read the agreement and see that they have responsibilities vis a vis the ongoing maintenance of the property. I, I don't think you put a lot of specifics in about particulars of the garden, because gardens change over time. I mean, this one's really changed from decades ago because of the introduction of deer. It, it's really quite a different set of plant material that you can use in a garden right now, but the ongoing requirement to, to maintain it is, I think, the useful language in an agreement like that, and it's quite common in heritage revitalization agreements to have that kind of language.
And just for I'm clear, that, that language you're comfortable having in this agreement, that's, that's your intent, is to have some language around that about the gardens?
Absolutely. Well, uh, my, our intention is to have the language in the agreement that just, that obligates owners to ongoing maintenance of the property.
Okay, thank you. And, and one last question, I'll get to yours, uh, as well, is, uh, to staff, and this is just the, the notion of removing designation of the secondary lot. Uh, and, uh, is that, I mean, it seems reasonable to me, it's gonna be a new house on a, on a newly formed lot, that it wouldn't have the heritage designation on that particular portion of it. Um, is that something that, that staff would recommend, uh, doing as part of this HRA?
Uh, I would, I would suggest so.
Uh, Council Brithwaite, and then Council Zelka?
Yeah, just to go back to some, um, information from your report, Ms. Jensen, through you chair, um, under the Heritage Commission, um, section on page five, um, it says, "Discussion from the Heritage Commission members included comments that the rock gardens were not included in the statement of significance, um, that they had some concern about setting procedures for subdivision on designated properties, and suggested the new structure should reflect the heritage character of the existing home." Um, it also goes on to say that, um, the property should be subject to a no future subdivision clause. Is that reflected in the information that you have as well, or?
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I don't quite understand.
So i- is that, is that the, the no future subdivision clause, is that something that's in, or could be in the agreement, or has that had been discussed?
I, that would be, uh, more likely to see that happen through the subdivision process.
Okay, and what about the, um, rock gardens that weren't included in the statement of significance?
The rock gardens, if the applicant is agreeable, we can include that back through the statement of significance and the character defining elements.
'Cause it seems that, that, it seems that the applicant is, um, intent on having the gardens contained, all of the gardens contained in that statement of significance. Is that correct?
Um, Ms. Hillyer, to come back and just answer that question?
I, I, I don't think it's necessary to have a clause that, that spends a lot of time detailing gardens, because they're an evolutionary element of the property. Um, the rock gardens, um, may have been in a statement of significance in the past, I don't recall that, but I don't think in two thousand and fifteen, when the conservation plan was made, that they could be seen. They were, we, we discovered them after taking out invasive materials. So if we, if the statement of significance were to make reference to, um, rock gardens on the property, there's, there's rock gardens of varying descriptions all over the place. I don't know that we would, we, we might wanna make a general comment about them, but rock gardens, like everything else in a garden, evolve over time, much more than a house does. So I think you have to be careful to not be so prescriptive in those, in, in your language with, with, and still recognize the value of that element of the landscape.
I think just, um, through you chair, if I may, um, there's also suggestion that the new structure should, new structures, um, should they be built, should reflect the heritage character of the existing home. I'm assuming that you would want that as well, so.
And that's why we included the drawings in the package.
Thank you.
We have suggested a house that we think would be fitting.
But I'm just gonna, you asked the question earlier of staff, but not of the applicant. Uh, the sub, the no subdivision clause, is that, I appreciate, I mean, any, any covenant that we come into is obviously between the municipality and the homeowner, which can always, nothing's ever written in stone, um, but is there value in recognizing that the intent of this HRA is not to be the first step of multiple subdivisions, but the intent is to maintain these gardens as part of the landscape of the, of the house, or is, I'm curious, but where that, sort of, if that is the intent of this body, that, where that gets reflected in the documentation, so councils fifteen or twenty years from now would see it and, and get an understanding, presuming that is the intent of this body? Would that go into this, the HRA? Would that go into the statement of significance, or does it go anywhere, I guess is the question? I, I'll put that to staff.
I, I would suggest it's more appropriate to do it at the stage of subdivision, um, recognizing, of course, that it would most likely be attached as a covenant, and a covenant is something that, you know, at some future point, the property owner at that time could come in and ask to have that, that covenant removed or amended.
And I, I fully appreciate that. It's just sometimes it's good to capture it so that the intent is there, and recognize it can always be changed by future councils. We can't bind anybody else, after all. Is there any other questions? Council Zelka?
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. Um, so a question for the, um, acting director of, um, uh, building and planning. Um, at some point, um, the subdivision approving officer is essentially gonna act us, or ask us to butt out, because, uh, there's certain things that we cannot do as a council. Um, and, uh, I just wanted to ask, uh, from the perspective of, 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 of our responsibilities, I understand that this HRA process and the whole process we're going through right now is essentially, um, a precursor, but also guidance for the approving officer? I just wanted to ask that preliminary question first.
Ms. Jensen?
Uh, through you chair, so yes, it would act as a precursor, uh, no subdivision could ta- take place if the heritage agreement was, was, uh, not agreed to by council.
Following up, if I may. Um, so then, um, uh, it, it sounds to me that, that while there is, there will be a later subdivision process, um, council isn't part of that, so we do need, it sounds to me like if there is anything that we would need to have included in that, we would probably need to address it sooner as opposed to later, uh, so that, uh, 'cause I, I know the approving officer can go into public interest and can do a number of other things on that person's own, um, but, uh, but in terms of receiving guidance from us, now's the time to, to do it. Is that correct?
Ms. Jensen?
Uh, through you chair, if there are any significant concerns, then y- yes, earlier on in the process is the best time to raise those. Uh, generally, you would see a clause in the HRA as well that says, um, you know, the schedule that you're attaching that shows the overall layout for what the applicant is proposing to do, that that is, still does not guarantee final subdivision approval at a later stage.
Uh, continuing, if I may, thank you very much, I appreciate this opportunity. Um, so, uh, I wanted to ask, um, a, a couple of items in particular. I, I, I didn't see it anywhere in your report, but I heard it mentioned in the oral, um, uh, presentation by, the excellent oral presentation by the owners. Uh, the small slice of land that appears, that, that, that maybe, I, I understand is going to be transferred to the owners to the south of some sort of, it sounds like essentially that's, that's a small third lot that's sort of being sliced off. Um, I just wanted to ask about, uh, uh, but obviously they'll, they'll go through a process through the approving officer and chance of how the mechanisms of that'll happen, but what I wanted to ask about was, um, I didn't, couldn't tell how much land is actually this is involved from the, um, from the, um, reports that are, are given. Is this, is this a minimal amount of land? Is this like a couple of hundred square feet, a couple of thousand square feet? I couldn't, couldn't exactly tell.
Uh, I'll, I'll direct it to Ms. Jensen, and she can answer, I'll direct to the owners.
Uh, well, to clarify, I, there, there is a clause in the, in the staff report that refers to that some of the properties along the, the interior side lot lines are potentially looking to, um, I guess, take a portion of that land as part of this application process. We don't have anything specific yet that says what that would look like, or who wants to take it, what the dimensions of that are. So it would not be creating a third lot, rather it would be transferring a portion of land to the other site.
And I'll just put that to the owner, if you give some sense of the, of the size of that piece of property in terms of square footage?
Uh, it may be up to ten feet of property from our property to the next owner, and it would be across the entire west portion of their property line, the east portion of ours. It's, it's about eighty feet.
So about eight hundred square feet, approximately?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you, that's appreciated.
That's it? Okay. Well, we have the options in front of us. I'd be looking for more, or, sorry, I have to go to, I have to, looking forward to input from, uh, from the public at this point. If there's any questions or comments, uh, we'd welcome you very much to come forward to the, to the microphone at the front here, and you can speak at this time. So anybody wishes to come forward to speak to this application? I don't see anybody, okay?
I would move the staff recommendation.
Which is option one?
Option one.
Yeah.
Sorry. We have a mover and a seconder. Um, is there any other discussion? Council Kirby?
I just wanted to, um, express my, uh, thanks to the homeowners for the work that they've done, and to staff for working with them to come to an agreement. I think this is a excellent step forward. The house looks amazing, and, um, and from the slide we have there, we can And, um, and from the slide we have there, we can see where it came from and how much work you've put into it. So just, I think it's a, it's a gem. It's an enjoyable, um, view to pass by as you go down Runnymede. And I think I speak for all of council and our thanks for that.
Thank you. Um, and I just want to make clarification here on this motion. Uh, there was a number of items explicitly listed by the applicant in their, in the presentation about the, the requirement to maintain the spirit of the heritage guidelines, permission to build a, a garden shed in the future, those sorts of things. Are, are all of those articulated there? Are those included within this, this motion? Or is anything there require additional guidance from council?
Uh, we have recorded the items that have been listed by the applicant. Many of those are included in their application, so we will address those as part of the agreement.
Okay, and that'll come back to council, obviously, as, as part of the completed piece for us for consideration.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions and comments? Okay, I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Very good, thank you very much. And I just, I'll take my, the pulpit here for a second and just say thank you. Uh, we, we, this body often have people come forward, uh, having done a bunch of work on things without permits and, and have to ask for permission after the fact. And you guys have gone forward with this heritage, uh, very expensive and very, very substantive restoration of this very meaningful house of the community. Uh, and as a community, it's very, uh, it's, it's, it's a real benefit to the community to what you've done so far. So I just want to acknowledge that, that that work has been done with no knowledge of being able to, to recoup those costs necessarily. Um, but for the, and, but they have a net benefit to the, to the community. Um, it's a really iconic house. It's a really, uh, it's a really, designated in nineteen eighty, sort of at the beginning of that, uh, that movement to even designate. So, uh, just want to thank you on behalf of council for, for moving this process forward. So thank you. And that's it. You are free to go, I guess, at this point. We are going to move on to item number five, which is the application for heritage revitalization agreement at nine sixty Foul Bay Road. Will follow a similar process. So with that, I will ask Ms. Jensen to give an overview of the application.
Uh, so this application is also for a heritage revitalization agreement that proposes to move and restore the existing home on the property and create an additional four lots from that main, um, parent parcel. The existing home would be moved to the corner of Foul Bay Road and Brighton Avenue with the home facing along Brighton. Uh, this home is not currently on the Oak Bay Heritage Register. So as part of the proposal, the applicant has offered to designate the home as heritage and place it on that register. A statement of significance was prepared by Donald Luxton, who indicates that this is a Tudor revival style home, uh, known as the Lawson residence, and was designed by Samuel McClure in nineteen fourteen. The statement also identifies the prominence of the home with its proximity to other heritage homes along the Foul Bay spine and identifies specific features such as brick chimneys, fenestration, and the sleeping porch at the front of the home. So the Heritage Commission has also reviewed this application. They did have concerns regarding the overcrowding of the heritage home, uh, as it's placed in its new location, and suggested additional open space should be provided around it. They also discussed converting the home to suites. However, the applicant has advised that the interior layout does not lend itself to that conversion. The commission determined that this was an opportunity to preserve a prominent heritage landmark so long as the streetscape was maintained. Ultimately, their recommendation was in favor of the heritage revitalization agreement and designating that home. So this application has also been reviewed with respect to OCP policy, neighborhood context, proximity to transit and Oak Bay Avenue, green space and heritage preservation. Servicing requirements are still under review, and staff anticipate a number of trees will be removed as a result of the building move and new construction. Uh, again, staff are requesting council direction as to the options outlined in the report.
Okay, thank you very, very much for that. Um, uh, the applicant is here. I see him in the audience. So if you wish to come forward, uh, I'm sure there will be many questions, uh, that come forward on this one. You don't, you do not have a presentation to make?
No, I'll make a short oral presentation. That's okay.
More than welcome to, yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So my name is, uh, thank you, first of all. My name is Stacy Dewhurst, and I'm the owner of nine six zero Foul Bay Road. And, uh, they've left, but I'd also like to acknowledge Bruce and Anne for their efforts on this property that was presented ahead of me. I followed Bruce and Anne's work over the years, and they truly are the leaders in this area. Their attention to detail is amazing, and, um, I wish them all the best with that, with that application. So as some of you know, some of you know me, some of you don't, I have been quietly and carefully restoring and retaining significant properties while adding sensitive infill in our established neighborhoods for the last twenty-five years. This property at nine six zero Foul Bay presents a unique opportunity, uh, for the community, for ourselves, and for the future homeowners there, to really be part of, um, probably the most significant revitalization, restoration, and rescue of a property that I've been involved in. So the lot is, uh, so, so first of all, I think you guys have all the minutia and the technical data and whatnot from the planning department. So I'll give you sort of an overview of my vision for the property. Uh, the lot is, give or take, about three quarters of an acre. It's on the southwest corner of Foul Bay at Brighton. And this, this property hosts a nineteen fourteen, uh, character mansion that was designed and built by Sammy McClure for the Lawson family. The home, for whatever reason, did not receive heritage registration or designation, maybe because it hadn't changed hands for forty years, maybe because it's been hidden behind this overgrown lot for all of this time. The property is owned RS4, and if this home were to be removed from this lot, that lot would qualify for subdivision into three large estate-sized lots. Uh, those lots would support large executive-style homes, which would probably appeal to, um, part-time, higher net worth, out-of-town type buyers. And I think that course, that path, is what most developers would take with this property because it's such a massive undertaking to do what I'm proposing. That would be much easier course. Um, but it's not what I do. It's not who I am. Uh, I'm an Oak Bay resident. I'm a lifelong Victoria resident, and I really care about these neighborhoods. So I think I have a much better plan than that, and I'm hoping you, uh, will support that plan. So what I'd like to do is, uh, as Deborah mentioned, is I'd like to take this, this home. We've done a, uh, significant, uh, statement of significance by Donald Luxton, the heritage expert from Vancouver. He's identified the unequivocal heritage significance of this home. But he's also detailed the extensive deferred maintenance that the home has suffered over the last twenty or maybe thirty years. That is a function of the previous owner's inability to cash flow these, uh, water falling expenses as these older homes begin to deteriorate. So my plan is to take this house, lift it, turn it, and relocate it on the front corner of Foul Bay, so it's facing north, up Brighton towards the avenue, place it on a new foundation with all-new infrastructure, and, uh, place two new suites in the lower level, which will act as an economic engine going forward. And I think if this home had had suites like this, uh, in the previous owner's time, creating this stream of passive income, it could have helped mitigate some of these deferred maintenance issues that we now have. So I like the economic engine idea. Um, and then, of course, I will completely restore the home in accordance with Donald Luxton's outline of maintenance items that need to be restored. We will, um, register the home, designate the home heritage to protect it from demolition or further development in the future. And, uh, then I would like to build four new homes on the property of modest size. Two would be on one side of the mansion that face onto Brighton. Two would be the, on the other side of the mansion facing onto Foul Bay. And these homes would be modest in size, about twenty-four to twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred square feet. They would be a character-style home that takes their design element cues from the mansion, as well as, uh, the other, uh, homes in the neighborhood. There are some significant homes in the neighborhood. And these homes would appeal to local, full-time, younger families who are looking for access into the Oak Bay housing market, where they can live, they can put down roots, they can have their kids attend school, and they can support the community. So that, to me, is a much better use of this property, uh, as opposed to, you know, three modern executive-style homes. And I think when we're done there, uh, it's going to really showcase, uh, the site overall. We're looking at losing seven to nine trees. And of course, we have a bylaw that dictates that I think for every tree that we lose, we have to replace two. But this plan, by keeping these homes small, the new homes, and keeping the garages in the front of these homes, as opposed to running driveways down the backyard, allows us to keep more trees, more green space in the back. And all of this was designed to address, uh, concerns that neighbors may have, even before I went and spoke to the neighbors. In twenty-five years, I've never had a neighbor come to one of my public rezonings and, and speak against them. I've tried to be as thorough as I can. I try to do things from the standpoint of how I would want to see it as a neighbor. Uh, I, I know in this case that I'm not going to be able to please everybody. I know that already. But in addition to the work I've just described, we are also going to revitalize our entire frontage along Brighton Street. And I don't know if you've seen it recently, but it is, it is really derelict. And it's through no fault of ours, but it's very derelict. It's kind of a gray zone there between the Oak Bay-Victoria border. So we intend to put a brand-new, six-and-a-half-foot-wide sidewalk curb and gutter down the entire length of our frontage with a fully landscaped boulevard. And then if you can picture up near the top of Brighton, at Foul Bay where the new crosswalk is, thank you very much for the crosswalk, we're going to place a bench and a small stone pillar, which will, uh, have a plaque that tells the story of this home. Because as we come down, um, Foul Bay now, from the avenue, this home is going to be brought out of, it, it's going to appear out of nowhere, literally. I mean, it, it hasn't been visible, and it is going to be absolutely spectacular. And it's going to transform that corner into a gateway into South Oak Bay. It is going to be reference standard South Oak Bay. And I think with this development, when it's done, uh, it will set the tone for how these types of developments should be done. How we ought to be able to save and preserve these older homes. How we ought to be able to register and designate them, give them an economic engine going forward, and how we can, even in a small way, address the supply problems that we currently have in our single-family home market by providing smaller, more modest homes that are in keeping with the neighborhood while protecting green space. So thank you very much. That's, uh, that's the vision, and I, and I hope for your support.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dewhurst. Um, we have questions of the applicant or staff. Mayor Jensen?
I'm familiar with the place you restored down on McClure, I think is the street. I think you took an old house. I don't know if you moved it. You might have moved this slightly forward, but that's not relevant to my question. But what you did is you created four units in there, and they were Stratit-type units. But it doesn't sound like what you're doing here. Uh, you're going, with respect to the old house, you say you're putting two suites. Uh, so it would still be a single-family dwelling with, uh, two suites that would be rented out. Is that, uh, you would, so it's not like the one you're doing on McClure, where you've actually sold four units? You wouldn't be selling three units here?
No, not at all. McClure Street, as you, as you mentioned, was a nineteen twelve period home that had suffered, again, just massive, massive, uh, uh, it was really rundown. And so we did. We lifted the home, revitalized it, converted it to four Stratia units. Here, um, initially suites weren't on my mind at all. Uh, that idea came from elsewhere. And then in chatting with some of the neighbors, there was a concern about, well, suites means cars, and cars means parking, and on and on it went. And so, but I, I like the idea of the economic engine, but we could rough these suites in, or we could complete them. But the idea is, and I've made this commitment to the neighborhood, that they are not for sale. This is not a home conversion. Uh, these are simply, uh, two rental suites, where, kind of like what Anne and Bruce suggested, where the previous owner of their home, in fact, like Mrs. Henderson who owned this home, when the stairs become unbearable, you can still remain in your home, not have to leave your neighborhood, um, which is kind of what a conversion does. But these are rental units. The house would be under one title.
And maybe it's for staff, uh, because you, it sounds like, though, what could happen is someone could move in and convert it all and take the, you know, these, I'd take it would be closer, closer to affordable rentals, uh, and then convert them back into a single-family dwelling and remove the suites. Uh, there was nothing, because you talk about roughing them in, and so someone might decide to buy that, uh, the old home, not rough them in, but make it part of the, uh, the basement, let's say.
Right, and, uh, staff and I have chatted about that, and, uh, if, I, I don't want to talk in a term, but I think the direction I was getting from them was maybe to solve that. Why don't you build the suites? You'd rather you build these suites. So then they're there. It's part of the HRA. They are part and parcel of the house. You wouldn't be able to get a permit, for example, to remove those suites at a later date.
Okay, so that, that was going to be my next question. Is there, uh, a mechanism, because we do need rental housing in, in Oak Bay. There's no question about that. And if council decides that there should be two rental units here, is there a mechanism for ensuring they don't get removed? In other words, uh, would that be a covenant or something? Is that even possible, or part of the HRA, I guess?
Ms. Jensen?
That's correct. It would be part of the HRA. We would specifically list that this is the work to be completed, that this is what has been agreed to through that process. And so any future, uh, proposal to do work within that house would come back to that HRA.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Mayor, also, if I may just finish, th- this home is approximately eight thousand five hundred square feet, without considering the size of the suites. So I'm imagining a professional couple, maybe their kids have left home, they've always wanted a home like this. Uh, they don't want to do any work. They want to ramble around in this big old mansion. I don't think they're going to need the additional space. There's so much room inside the main house.
Okay, and just, what's the breakdown? You say total right now is eight thousand?
I think it's around eighty, eighty, eight, eight, eight-five hundred.
So what, with the, of that eighty-plus, uh, what would the suite sizes be?
I, I, the suite sizes would be about nine hundred square feet each, I think.
Each, eh?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Uh, I, just to follow up to that, to be clear, we can't force people to rent. The, the suites would stay there, but they could not rent them. That's obviously a reality of any situation. Um, are there any other questions of the applicant? Counselor Kirby?
Um, just in review of the, um, the, uh, site plan, I'm just wanting to clarify, clarify the sidewalk that you're including in the application. Is, is, is that only on Foul Bay Road, or is that on Brighton as well?
It's only on Brighton.
Only on Brighton?
Yeah.
Okay, because Foul Bay doesn't have a sidewalk. So I just thought you would, you were including a sidewalk where there's no continuation.
So on Brighton Street, there's no sidewalk. It looks like a used car parking lot there. So we are, we are, we, so what, what's beautiful about that is that sidewalk will actually flare out quite a bit. And then we'll have this, these driveway crossings, and then we'll have this wide landscaped boulevard. So the homes, though they will be set back the normal distance, the normal front setback, they will appear to be set back much further because of that landscaped boulevard.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that sidewalk is going to fundamentally change that entire frontage of Brighton Street because it is a dedicated walkway, as you know, and it, it, it doesn't really showcase Oak Bay at its best, but I think that's going to change everything.
Some people like an unpaved gravelly.
Okay, okay, I won't pave.
Just saying, there, there are all kinds of people, and in a way, we've, we've encountered, uh,
Sure.
resistance to sidewalks in, in places when you wouldn't expect it. Um, but that's encouraging, and I, just one more follow-up question then. Um, with regards to, um, the Arborist's report and, um, the placement of the driveways, um, I'm just wondering if you could speak to, or maybe staff, I'm not sure who, who would be able to answer this, but, um, whether there is some, um, uh, a negotiation has been reached so that we would save the most number of trees?
Well, uh, as the previous application, you were talking a bit about the subdivision process. That comes a little bit later, and we've outlined in our package the building envelope potentials. And we've put in some potential driveway crossings that, uh, initially those homes, especially the homes that, that border our neighbors to the west of us, who are actually in Victoria, but they, they go around the Brighton Street corner there. So we've moved those homes away from their property line as much as we can. We've moved the driveways away from them. But you're right. So when we get around to the subdivision part of it, in, in collaboration with Deborah's department and the Arborist, we'll locate these driveways and everything else in such a way as to minimize, uh, the impact of the trees. We like, I love trees. I like trees, and, and I think this, this site will benefit from that. So that isn't cast in stone yet. That just shows where the lots will be, what the maximum potential of the envelopes is, and some examples of driveway locations.
Thank you. Oh, Counselor Braithwaite?
Um, thank you. Um, so I, I'm happy to hear, um, how committed you are to retaining the heritage house because I think that's really important. Um, but when I look at where you've situated it on the lot, um, I can't help but think that it goes... I can't help but think that it goes really against the statement of significance in that the statement of significance, especially for a McClure House, is the setting that it is seen from. And to me, this is far too close to the front of the road. I wonder at the logic about putting five lots in, on this space. To me, it would, it's a space that, to have that Heritage House really showcased as you're wanting to do, that it should not be five lots, it should be a lesser amount. So can you talk to me about the, about the logic about doing something like that? Because honestly, to me, it just doesn't seem like it's going to showcase, it's going to be, you said, you said, I actually wrote it down, because I was interested in what you said. You said something about, oh, now I can't find it. I will find it. Oh, you can't help but think that the house will appear out of nowhere. But I think it'll appear out of nowhere, but not in a really good way. So perhaps speak to that.
It's a great question, and it's a question that's come up with the Heritage Commission. Though they were more concerned with the amount of land that we're leaving behind the Heritage House until we butt up against the next lot that'll be along Fowl Bay. So if you look at the back, rear yard setback of where we placed the Heritage Home, even though it's a large lot, the side yards of the Heritage Homes' new placement will be effectively more like their front and rear yard, and the rear yard is more like a side yard. So the Heritage Commission was suggesting that wouldn't it be great if there was one less lot? And that would be the middle lot between the mansion and the house along Fowl Bay. And that mansion would have a larger backyard. And in a perfect world, we would do that, because I agree with all of that. From the front, the home will be set back twenty-five feet from the front property line roughly, I think, and you have this landscaped boulevard. So the home will be properly set back. It will be lined up with the other two homes that will be built on Brighton. And we have a heavily treed perimeter that runs along the Fowl Bay frontage. So it will tend to, the house will appear from the front as we approach it going south on Fowl Bay. It won't be much more visible from the side than it currently is. But to answer your question, why isn't it on a bigger lot? Comes down to economics at the end of the day.
Do you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, it comes down to economics at the end of the day. So we're trying to do everything we can here and have it still make some financial sense. And that's, without, without the four lots, it doesn't make any sense to keep the house. Because it's just easier to build out three brand-new houses.
Well, through you, Chair. I find it interesting that you would now say that, because I think you started off your conversation saying that you, that this house had unequivocal heritage significance.
It does, it does.
So then for you to turn around and say that you would have to tear the house down, I find that interesting. I'm also looking at the different set, or the different variances that you're requesting for almost every single, I believe this, if, staff, perhaps you can answer this for me. There's variances on every single lot that are being proposed.
As noted on page three of the report, it speaks to some of the variances that would be required to reflect the regulations that are set out in that zone. Again, recognizing that as part of an HRA, there wouldn't be specific variances, but that's what would be incorporated into the agreement.
Thank you. So I'll be interested to hear what some of your neighbors have to say. I know that in the report, you said you only had one neighbor who has spoken against it. So I'll be interested to hear what some of the comments of the neighbors are. Because I find it very interesting, again, to have five lots when it looks like perhaps four might be better.
You know, I appreciate your comments, and we looked at that. And obviously, after having the application circulating for eleven months now, you know, we incur a lot of risk through market risk, interest rate risk. The house itself is constantly at risk. So the more time that goes by, the more risk we're incurring. So obviously, I'm intent on this path, or I wouldn't have started down the path. But it's only fair that everybody is aware of all of the options. So the HRA was brought to my attention as a way, because I was, I said, how am I going to make this heritage? How can I save this Heritage House if I don't have a lot that would normally reflect the size that this home should be on? So the HRA was suggested as a way for flexibility to come into the equation, so it works for everybody. And my understanding was the HRA says, well, it's not going to be perfect, because you wouldn't need an HRA if it was perfect. But this allows us to save this home, it allows us to get ninety percent of it right. And maybe there's a few things that in a different world, we could have done differently. But as part of the process, we make it all work. That was kind of the idea. And that's what I'm hoping to accomplish. I mean, it's a terrific corner, and it's a terrific house.
Okay, Councilor Selka?
Thank you very much, Chair. A question for the applicant. I very much appreciate, her comment first, I very much appreciate trying to save the house. I like, I like your work. And I appreciate the intent you're trying to do here. Under the OCP, this is an established neighborhood. Established neighborhood allows single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes. First question will be for staff. Does it allow fourplexes? Established neighborhoods, please?
Ms. Jensen?
Yeah, that's, the policy within the OCP is actually fairly general in nature. No, it does not specifically identify fourplexes.
Thank you very much. However, under an HR, HRA, probably some sort of arrangements could be made, I'm sure. However, under, under the existing designation, to me, to my way of thinking, this site with what you're describing is your intent almost screams for duplexes, or maybe even triplexes, as a way of collapsing some of those side lot lines and things. And maybe dealing with the whole driveway issue, and the garage doors facing the street, which is not exactly an Oak Bay look. But on the other hand, it's a compromise that I see what you're trying to get at. Had you considered duplexes or triplexes as a way of maybe giving this lovely Heritage Home a little bit more elbow room? And at the same time, achieve the economic means to get this project done?
And if I may, I'm going to add one other wrinkle to that question, because it was on my mind as well. I don't want to make you answer things twice. In the Lot Four, which is a central lot of the, along Fowl Bay Road, to get more green space behind the mansion there, and that would be living space for the suites and for the house itself, you know, if it's half of that lot, that would, to my mind, make a lot of sense to maybe do this similarly, right? We have a duplex or something in the conjoined one-and-a-half lots that are there. And so similar to Councilor Selka's question, like, what other options have you looked at, and are some of those viable?
Yeah, thank you. The two lots on Brighton aren't in question. The issue is how do we get some more land behind this mansion or do something? So first of all, we've looked at everything. I think the highest and best use of this thirty-five thousand square foot site is about a twenty-eight unit building. And twenty years from now, we'll look back on this site and say, you know, based on the scarcity of land and the scarcity of condominiums, maybe that was a missed opportunity. But nobody's ready for that today. So we worked back from there. We looked at the property down on Chandler Street where they had the mansion, Chandler and Fowl Bay Road. And they built those townhomes around the mansion. They got quite a bit of density, you know the ones, I mean, it looks terrific. Of all the developments along Fowl Bay that involved that, that one, I liked the most. So we've talked about more density in a way that would go towards solving these housing issues for people like us as we age, but don't want to leave the neighborhood. But, you know, when I, when I sort of encounter some of the neighborhood reaction, you know, especially from one or two individuals over four little houses, the idea of going to them and saying, hey, guys, how about eight or twelve townhouses? Well, you can go, but I don't really want to go. I will, but there is, this is, you know, this is a big site on a big corner. It's the perfect spot, and it's a challenge to get this far. I would be open to more density. I think the site supports a lot more density. Most of what I've done is been trying to keep the privacy of the two neighbors in Victoria immediately to the west of us that come off of Brighton Street. I could envision a courtyard, I can envision two or three clusters of character-style townhomes. I could envision three clusters of those. And if you can sell it to the neighbors, I'll build it.
So we'll go to the public here soon, but Mayor Jensen wanted to have one more question?
Well, it really is a follow-up on that. I'm quite familiar with the Chandler that you, development you speak of at the time, and acquaintance that I knew was involved in that. And I think it was some kind of, at least in part of society, that put it together. And they did a great job. And it's really worn well in that area. And the way they melded the historic home with the townhomes, it really created great use of the land. So it may well be that something like that would be more appropriate for this. But what I don't know is, what was the size of that land? What was the percentage of green space? How was parking accommodated? So I think if you're going to go down that road, that might be a road worth exploring. I'd certainly have, knowing that Chandler one and how well it's worked is something that, that I think is worthy of consideration. But again, I don't know how the lots compare in size, location of the house. But anyway, so we would need, I would need, if you're going to go down that road, more information. But certainly would be open to that.
All right, I'm going to go to the public and invite the public to come forward, and I'll make my little pitch, well, if anybody wants to come forward. Because I think these are the kind of situations, like, if we were looking at a broader housing implementation plan, this spot, in a large lot, that is a block and a half from the avenue, it seems a very logical place to put higher density in. It's harder to do it when we don't have a plan that kind of outlines these kind of options for it, because it's, you are still doing a one-off in this case to get approval from the community and from the neighbors and so forth. So, and it's not necessarily fair without that broader consultation to make those changes, right? So, are there anybody from the public who wishes to come forward to speak? Yeah, please come forward, and the process, yeah, stay close, because there may be some questions that require some answering. And if you could just state your name and just write your name as well, so we have it spelled correctly on the minutes.
Yes, my name is Lauren Siverson. And we own the property immediately west of nine sixty Fowl Bay, which is actually in Oak Bay, as well as partly in Victoria. It's split, about half in Oak Bay and half in Victoria, so it's very much Oak Bay. We have lived there for some time and watched the property deteriorate over time, and that's been up in the last number of years. And it's very clear to us and to others that something needed to be done. And because it is, it's not sustainable the way it is. We learned about the Dewhurst's proposal some months back. And immediately, initially certainly had a large number of concerns. And we still have concerns. Those concerns included what was happening to the McClure House. And we supported that it be retained and revitalized, and that is the proposal. We are very much concerned about overdensification and a number of other issues related to the design of any new houses. And we had a number of meetings with Dewhurst. We set out our concerns, and there are a large number. And actually, we met many, many times with Dewhurst and came to a, an agreement, which is all set out in a memorandum of understanding, which I filed with the planning department, which is signed. And on the basis of the commitments by Dewhurst, and there are twenty or so commitments with respect to design, setbacks from the property, number of houses, size of houses, and so on, we did sign a letter of non-opposition. We would be very concerned if there was a proposal to increase the densification. We have signed this on the basis that there would be four new moderately-sized houses and a revitalized house. We still have some concerns, but we've agreed with Dewhurst on the basis of something needs to be done, it's not sustainable, something will be done. And we would certainly be in opposition to apartment block or duplexes or so on. And I should point out, too, there was a question about the variances that in the application. Those variances, as I understand it, apply only to Lot Number Three, the McClure House, not to the new houses. And we have been told that there will be no proposals for any variances on the existing four houses. They will be compliant with all Oak Bay bylaws and rules.
Thank you, thank you. And I think, because the question was there, is that, just to get confirmation that the setbacks, the side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks for the proposed houses, the building envelopes laid out on this plan, are those in fact compliant with the setback requirements of Oak Bay? I'm getting a yes from the applicant, is that, okay, we'll leave it at that then? Ms. Jensen, you said I had your finger dangling over the button there.
At this point in time, the subdivision layout that we have really just shows the building envelope for each of those sites. Through the subdivision process, as we proceed, we would be looking at siding and design for each of those lots.
And obviously, at that time, we could consider variances if that was at our discretion, because that's part of our standard process, we can always do that. But the intention here is obviously not to do that.
That's correct. At this time, I wouldn't foresee that there'd be any need for variances.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Braithwaite?
Through you, Chair, to staff, there's a talk of a document that has been signed by everybody, but we haven't seen this document. Is that something that's normal, that we would, that a document like this would be signed that has promises from a developer to neighbors in it? I'm confused.
It's not, it's not something that the municipality is party to, but rather the applicant has gone and spoken with the neighbors, and they have essentially issued letters of support.
So that wasn't my understanding, through you, Chair, that wasn't my understanding. It sounded like they had made promises of certain things happening or not happening. So is that true in your document, or, if I may ask?
I think it's probably fairer to ask that of the applicant, what the nature of that agreement is. Please come up to the microphone, Mr. Dewhurst, yes?
So as Mr. Siverson said, he and I had, and his wife had multiple, multiple conversations, and they had many concerns. And so Lauren, on his initiative, put together this MOU and said, this memorandum of understanding. If you will agree to these things that are of a concern to us, we'll agree to support you. So I read through them all, and we negotiated it, and they all made perfect sense to me. So it gave Lauren the security that he needed to know that I was willing to put into writing what I was willing to say at his coffee table.
Councilor Braithwaite?
So would it be fair to ask what, for some examples of what those are, or not?
I'm not sure.
I'm just wondering, like, if he's promising, you know, to put a bench in on every site or something like that, or, you know, to widen the sidewalk in front of somebody's house, then that's something that perhaps we want to be aware of.
I believe Lauren has submitted a copy to the planning department. It's a private document between them and myself, but he has submitted a copy, and I have no issue with you reviewing it, that's for sure. There's nothing weird in it, that's for sure.
I think your concern would be, is there sort of essentially a purchase of support as opposed to thing? And I think that's a legitimate concern, but I don't think we're going to delve into the details at this point. If it's with the staff for consideration, and we can review it, then I think that should be fine. And perhaps, staff, would it be appropriate if council wanted to have a look at that document? That he would have access to that as a document?
Absolutely, and apologies, I cannot open one of the attachments, so I can't tell if it was there or not.
Okay, no worries, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to come forward and speak to this application? Yes, please come forward. I know it's an awkward, usually as a committee of the whole, we sit at a table, and it's a little less formal feeling, but it is, the intention here is to allow a conversation. And some of the musings that we've had here in terms of what if this, what if that, is part of the nature of that informalness. So please introduce yourself and the community that you live in.
Hi, we're Wendy and Dave Cornoch, and we are making history here. The last twenty-five years, no one has spoke against. And we're taking this opportunity to do that, so. We live directly behind the property. And we do also commend Stacy for considering revitalization and saving of the Heritage House. Unlike the previous owners of the house on Runnymede, they've done, and I was so impressed, and we do walk by that house, and that's a gorgeous house. And they are renovating the gardens, and they're asking for one lot. And that makes it fair and equitable. And in this case, we're taking most of the land away from a beautiful house. We're moving it, we're putting four lots in, we're putting modest homes. But those modest homes, we've been told, are going to sell for one point four. They're going to be twenty-four hundred square feet, two stories, and a basement. We're not putting in any provision. We're not putting in any provision for parking for these basically seven families that will be living on a corner of a very busy street, with the offshoot of Brighton being not a narrow street, or being a narrow street, sorry, a little nervous. Um, and no parking on Fowl Bay as it is, that's a no parking street, no parking on Brighton. And I think we have to be realistic to know that where there are people that live, there are people that have cars. Oak Bay Avenue, which we currently have a business on, um, it's very busy, and it's getting busy, busier all the time. And more and more people coming into the area doesn't mean they're gonna take transit. We have to be realistic. It doesn't mean they're not gonna own a car, we have to be realistic. When people come to visit these people that live in these homes, where will they park? Who's gonna enforce when we've got these beautiful sidewalks and an even narrower street when they just park illegally? And we're, the traffic is gonna be flowing off onto Fowl Bay, which is a very busy street, and we're not making any provisions for it. And yes, I do recognize that we do need density. I think the OCP does state that, but it also states that it's around multi-use properties. Bunker's gone in, that's multi-use, commercial, the abstract's done, the Fowl Bay and Oak Bay Avenue project, condominiums, that doesn't relate to the neighborhood that we live in, that's an established neighborhood. And I think we'd just ask you as council to ta, to have the developer take a look, not at more density, because it's, I don't think that that's necessarily what this property needs with the type of streets and the type of parking and what's currently there already. There's a lot of houses that are between the seven and nine thousand square feet that don't have twenty-four hundred square feet homes proposed for them. And it, it's not what the existing neighborhood has. There's much more green space, much more yards. If it's a six thousand square foot house, it doesn't have, or a six thousand square foot property now, it doesn't have a twenty-four hundred square foot house. And also, the OCP talks about having affordable homes for people to go into without stairs. All of these houses are being planned to be two-story houses. That's not, if it was four houses that were small houses, that were fourteen hundred square feet on crawl space houses, it wouldn't be as equitable possibly for the developer. But somebody on Runny Mead has made a very lovely renovation of a heritage house, and they're asking for one. I just think that we need to look at it as an overall. And I have to say that it does affect us, we have submitted a letter to the planning department. Our backyard runs along the backside of a house that would run entirely on our backyard. The backyard for that house faces our neighbor, the Siversons. So, they will be looking from their property into somebody else's backyard green space. We will look up with no sun at, at two-story house, possibly two and a half, because it's gonna be raised, and we will have no sun in our backyard whatsoever. So, as much as we have concerns for traffic and safety, I have to be honest, we also have concerns for our lifestyle, so. That's what our presentation is.
We have a nice garden that won't get any sun, and that's what we're concerned about.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I would translate one of your comments with question, uh, and that is just, uh, we don't have the level of detail here in terms of what's proposed, but what is the total number of parking spots allocated for both the individual houses, as well as the, the restored mansion with the two suites, uh, which would have logically three different, if you could come to the, uh, to the, thank you very much. You can sit down, thank you.
The other thing I wanted to raise too is that we also pay, pay taxes as well.
So, with the new houses, they will conform to whatever the municipality bylaw states as it relates to parking. So, the idea would be you, in my mind, you would have, you'd, you'd go across the sidewalk driveway crossing over the paved portion of what would be the, the boulevard, enter onto the property, and you'd have a driveway that would go into a, uh, a garage, and the driveway would probably flare a little bit. So, there's lots of room for a second car there, or one in front of the garage. I mean, it's, it would be no different than any other new house that's been constructed in Oak Bay. And the mansion, uh, when it's relocated, has sufficient room on the side of it. Uh, there's some, some detail that I've become aware of, that the mansion itself currently has some, and I've talked to Deborah about this, some provision for four parking spots, four residential-only parking spots on the Brighton frontage. Um, but interestingly, the neighbors have asked me if I would fight for the removal of those parking spots. So, it, I don't know. I, I think if there's room for some on-street visitor parking, it's a good idea, but I've been asked by some neighbors to see if we can remove that on-street.
We'll leave that level of detail alone, I think, tonight, so we'll. Uh, Mayor Jensen, you had a question as well?
Uh, two that rise, one from the, uh, the presentation, and have there been, uh, shadow sun studies? Because often we have that, I know typically it's to do with, uh, larger buildings such as the one in Boca. We had some, uh, shadow studies done. Um, has that, any of that information been done?
Jensen?
No, shadow studies, as you mentioned, are typically with larger developments.
Okay, uh, and secondly, it has to do with, with parking for the main, for the old house. And it's just being proposed to be two? That could, to comply with the bylaw? Problem is, we don't have a bylaw that allows secondary suites, and we don't kind of, um, I, we, we haven't gone into secondary suites, and in a secondary suite in the home, how many extra spots should there be? That's something we're actually on the threshold of looking at. Uh, but so, uh, to have only two may be an issue, if, knowing that there's gonna be two suites. I know a lot of communities where they permit a suite, require an extra parking, uh, off-road parking for that, but it's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'm gonna keep going to the public, and then we'll come back, if that's okay. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak to the application at this time? Last one, last time then, does anybody else wanna come forward and speak? It's not as intimidating as it looks, we're all good, okay. Uh, councilors, oh, we have one more person.
Hi there.
Hi there.
I didn't intend to speak, I thought I'd just come and listen tonight.
Just please give your name and.
Oh, sorry, my name is Jared, I live on Brighton Crescent, I live, uh, northwest.
Can you just write your name down, the first and last name, so we have it on the, for the minutes?
Appears I'd be the first.
Oh, well, I think we have the other names.
Okay, I'll come back. Um, so, uh, my concern greatly is, is density. I appreciate, uh, Councilor Braithwaite's ca, uh, questions regarding this. Um, the thought that this would be a great spot to add more and more density is even more greatly concerning. Um, I just wonder how you might feel about that, if that was, uh, next to your home. Um, the, uh, all the concerns that the, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Cornoch raised, I thought, uh, I, I support them completely. Uh, I'm very concerned about their property, as well as, as the neighborhood as a whole. And I just wanna say, um, it was mentioned, young families coming into the neighborhood. I'm a young family, I have a young son, uh, I know of the other young family directly across. They've submitted, uh, a note of concern. And, um, you know, the idea that these homes, and it was mentioned twenty-four hundred square feet, I think that was sussed out, that actually, that's thirty-six hundred square feet, because that's not counting the basements. Uh, and the, and the price, I mean, this isn't what's gonna try more younger families, really. You end up with large homes, modest compared to the size of the mansion, but larger homes on small lots with no backyards. You know, these kids are gonna be landlocked in the house, they're not gonna have places to play, and I think the whole neighborhood suffers, uh, from a diminished amount of green space and a lot more infrastructure, uh, and lower standard of living, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could you, could you write down your last name in there as well, just so we have it?
Yeah, should I just start at like five or seven?
Sure. Otherwise, we have probably horrible misspellings of your names on the, uh, on the, on the, on the minutes. Nobody'd like, nobody appreciates that. Just the, the community that they live in. And there was somebody else who was gonna come forward as well? Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Ted Stevens, and I live at nine eight old Fowl Bay Road. So, I'm actually on Brighton, so I would be facing the heritage house when it was moved, so we'd be directly across the road from it. Um, I've spoken with my neighbor who isn't here, they're unfortunately away, they're next door to us, so that we are kind of both facing that side of the property. And of course, our main concern is the traffic flow and the parking, because right now, both sides of the road, as Fowl Bay, are no parking. So, we're just concerned, as you know, I meant, the way I see it, every household now has two cars. I mean, that's very typical. So, if we're gonna have a, uh, the big house with the main residence and two suites, we're probably talking six cars. The house beside us, we're up to ten cars. And then, so with no parking on either side of the road, and guests come, you know, where's the accommodation of visitor parking? Where is that going to work? And I understand, I know Stacy said, which I, I appreciate confirmation on, I meant, there's only a single car garage there right now, and he was saying there's parking for, allowed for four cars. So, I'm not quite sure how that works when there's only a single garage, so.
I'll believe that, I think it was in it, it was, there was some discussion about whether there was lots, uh, spots that are allocated to the house on the street, is that? And we don't actually do allocation of lots on the street as a thing. We don't, they don't get applied to a specific house, other than as a residential parking spot, it's adjacent house, so that would be the, the case.
Yeah, that's all, because there is quite a lot of parking there along that side of the street, which is clearly marked, there's no parking. So, I meant, you know, we've kind of put up with it, but, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, is there anybody else, oh, one more? You don't need to apologize, just come forward.
I'm Gloria Siverson. I just wanna say, in reference to the four parking spots that, um, people have been referring to, years ago, people were parking on the boulevard, because there's no sidewalk. So, someone, a previous person that lived next door to you people, um, came to the city, and they designated four spots, put up parking spots, signs that you couldn't park beyond that, but there was spots for four, that was about twenty years ago.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else wishes to come forward? I'm not seeing anyone. Uh, I think we had Councilor Zelka, you wanted to ask a question or make a comment?
Uh, yes, I did, uh, thank you Chair. Um, I'd, uh, start with a comment, um, this, um, this, it's a challenging site, um, and I imagine some of the issues, especially around, uh, traffic and parking, are gonna be similar to what we're gonna encounter with respect to the Grant, Granite Street, uh, United Church, um, uh, lot, that's just, uh, just a block and a half over. Um, so, what I wanted to ask about is, uh, depending on the final density on this lot, uh, is there any concern from staff with respect to, um, traffic flow and parking? I don't recall seeing that in the report, um, and I sort of wanted to float the idea whether staff, uh, depending on what that report says, if there is a report, uh, would there be a need for a traffic lights possibly at Brighton and Fowl Bay Road? Thank you.
Uh, I guess I'll put that over to, uh, Mr. Horen, Director of Engineering.
Uh, through you Chair, we, we're currently, after the installation of the new crosswalk there, we're currently studying the traffic patterns there to see if the upgrades are required or whether the status quo is, is good enough, so that's a separate issue that's going on. Excuse me. Um, as far as the impact of a potential development at nine sixty Fowl Bay Road and, um, parking concerns and traffic concerns, that's all lumped in with the, uh, the process for the subdivision itself, so all the off-site servicing, um, sidewalk requirements, infrastructure upgrades, underground infrastructure, that, that it falls into the same analysis, which hasn't been completed yet.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, following up, if I may?
Go ahead.
Uh, so this question, um, again, I don't want to step on the toes of the approving officer, um, but I imagine someone along the way would probably, depending on the density, re- request a traffic study. Just wanted to know whether that would fall within our bailiwick, or whether would that be a proving officer thing? And, and is that something that we would see at council? Thank you.
Um, I'll put that to staff, I'm not sure that traffic studies, because it's, the, the land would normally support three lots, this is sort of four lots plus a couple of extra units, if that's something that would ever be triggered or be required, but I'll, I'll put it to staff, is that something that would, that would come forward?
Uh, similar to the comment earlier about the, the shadowing study, typically with a single-family subdivision, you would not, uh, require a traffic study unless there was some unique circumstances around that development.
Thank you.
A final comment, if I may? Well, um, what I'm hearing from some members of the public is that the unique aspect of this, um, of this corner, uh, is that there's a concern about, um, traffic and, and also parking, of course, but with the fa, uh, small fam, uh, families nearby, and the fact that probably this, you know, we, we have this wonderful tweet curtain, and Brighton is not necessarily a well-known, uh, entranceway to Oak Bay. Possibly with this new development and this, uh, um, the potential change of density, this might become a new flow that we might need to manage. So, I just, I don't know, um, uh, how that might get raised, or, or we might do it after the fact. I just wanted to simply ask the question, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Brighton is not a through road at that point, is it? I think so, no, it's not gonna be a, from Victoria. It's walking on the. Um, okay, so we have an obligation here, in respect of time, uh, people here, uh, to move this forward in some way, of shape or form, we still have three options as, as for all of these, the move forward as set. Uh, if there's changes that people wanna see at around this table, based on the conversation, we can make those recommendations and send it back to staff, uh, or we can deny it, uh, which case the application couldn't come forward again in the same form for a few months, uh, at least. So, uh, I'm looking to council here to make some motions or to, or to further discussion. Councilor Braithwaite?
I, um, I'm not comfortable with sending this forward the way it is. Um, I would like to, um, but I'm also not comfortable denying it in it, in its, or, or, in its whole right. So, I would be comfortable proposing option number two, that the application be referred back to staff to continue negotiations on the proposed development.
Could I ask that you give some specifics to that? And we can change those over time, but just.
Uh, I, I think it does say referring the application back to staff would provide an opportunity to continue discussions with the applicants on any areas of concern that, that we identify. My, my areas of concern that I would identify would be the den- densification, uh, of the, um, five lots. I would like to see four lots there rather than five, um, or three. Um, and parking, um, I think parking is, is going to be an issue if you put that many lots in, at that corner. Um, and I'm really honestly not comfortable, um, agreeing with a, with putting secondary suites in a building when we don't even have a housing strategy around secondary suites. So, that one's a really big one for me. Um, and so, yeah, too much density, uh, the variances that would be on the other properties are issues for me. Um, I was, I, I hadn't thought that the twenty-four hundred square foot house would actually be a thirty-six hundred square foot house. I know the footprint is the same, but again, the massing of that is, is something, um, that I have difficulty with. So, those would be some of my reasons.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Councilor Croft, second, and Councilor Kirby?
Um, while I, uh, I guess I, I'm not ready to, to see this move forward, I, I have different reasons. And, um, I think the, I support the idea of the secondary suites, um, as I think we need to address affordable housing, uh, concerns in the community, and that's, you know, two additional suites that people need desperately. The, um, it's an interesting situation, because it's, again, the friction between, uh, the need for more housing, the need for more affordable housing, the need for housing, uh, for people that want to, um, age in place. Uh, and, um, and, you know, when we, we talk about smaller houses, uh, we need to, you can't, the, the, the cost of a house or the land, if we make it three houses, say, if, say we divide it up into three properties that support this heritage conversion, that land, it's the land that costs so much. My, my house is, you know, as you well know, a tiny little Oak Bay cottage, nineteen forty-eight falling down thing, and it's the land that's so expensive, it's the land, my house is worth twenty thousand dollars. And the land is worth, um, I don't know, but last I heard, it's nine hundred thousand dollars. So, it's the land that's expensive. So, if we carve this parcel up into smaller, less dense pieces, we're essentially saying we want really expensive, large properties. So, you can't say that you're rejecting the, um, proposal for four extra properties. So you can't say that you're rejecting the, um, proposal for four extra properties, um, you know, four new houses, based on the fact that they're going to be really expensive, because if it's three properties, if it's three extra, or two extra, the, the land is what makes it expensive. So then they'll still be, like, million something, I don't know, I don't, you know, I have no expertise there, but it'd be, they still are going to be, you know, two million dollar properties, because the land is what makes them so expensive. So I'm struggling with, with that, and, uh, with the desire for us to maintain established neighborhoods, to reflect the OCP, to support the heritage designation, and, and to, to continue to have that look and feel in our community, in the streetscape. That's what's important to this community, is to sustain that heritage look. But at what cost? So this is, this is where I think we're gonna have, we have this friction that's been ongoing, and we're gonna continue to have this. Um, but so while I support the secondary suites in the, in the larger house, I'm struggling with these four other properties that will be large houses. And I think we've seen that in another development in the community already, um, Fair Street, for example, you know, really beautiful houses, um, that are, um, you know, really expensive. And yes, families have moved in, that's great, but they're very expensive, and they're outside the range of most people in our community's ability to pay. Um, and so that's people, I think, probably coming from elsewhere that are being able to afford that kind of house. So, um, I think where we, when we want to seek sustaining, um, we want to sustain, you know, the Heritage Revitalization Agreement is here to, this, this tool is here to help us retain these beautiful heritage homes. Um, but it's also here to help us negotiate something that benefits the wider community. And so if we have something where we build in, um, something, I think what the, what I heard from the neighbors is not an objection to, um, the idea of sustain, you know, maintaining a heritage home, um, and change to the property. I think you've all accepted that there's going to be change, but, um, making sure that that change reflects, um, the desire for a benefit to everybody, which I think is, um, meaning sustaining community, sustaining that sense of feeling a part of something, feeling like, um, yeah, that you're connected somehow. And so backyards are important, and maybe we can achieve that through something smaller houses, but, um, as was suggested earlier, townhouses, or something where there's, there isn't the, where you lose a side yard, um, but maybe backing away from the, the rear lot, or the westerly lot, so that we protect the garden of the neighbors, um, and their, their sunlight, um, and just it's not as high, it's not a, something that shadows the neighbors. But I just think that there's another way to achieve it. So I'm not ready to see this move forward in its current state, because I don't think that this is going to achieve the goal of affordable housing, um, sustaining community, because I think these will be really the kind of houses for people bailing out of Vancouver. And that's, that's the only kind of people that can afford that kind of house, because we're not looking at, I mean, I don't know about you, but, um, it's very challenging for most young families to, uh, to buy the nine hundred square foot, twenty thousand dollar house, you know, like that's, the, the house I got, it was challenging. I don't see anybody in my age range or younger able to afford a one point five million dollar house.
I'm just gonna ask, I, I think it's important at this point, if we're gonna, the motion right now is to send it back for the applicant and staff to, to, to discuss. So the clearer the direction each of us can give, the better that is. I appreciate there's gonna be an opposite direction sometimes, and you're gonna have to make the most of that, uh, if this motion goes forward. So anything else to add on that?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel Nee, and then Counsel Zelka?
Oh, okay. Counsel to Croft, go ahead.
To, to you, Chair, as, as Secretary, I'd like the opportunity to speak.
Please go ahead.
Um, I, I actually, um, do support the motion. I find the, um, idea of the HCA very intriguing in this situation, but the heritage home is situated, I think it deserves more land around it so that you can see the home, it just doesn't pop up as you come around the corner. And I do support the idea of greater density on the remaining land in a single-family format, in smaller lots, or maybe in a row of townhouses, or something like that, backing up against the west property boundary, something like that, with nice backyards, so that people still have their yards on the other side. I, I see that kind of thing taking place here, and turning that house so that it faces where it faces now on Fal Bay Road, and giving it lots three and fours, the land around it, so that you do have room for the suites for the people, if suites are approved to go in that location. I just find that it is too compromised, the original heritage house, and I, and I, and I find that it, in a sense, it doesn't really flow with the idea of preserving that house in its great location, in that location. So, so that's why I can't support the application, because I do think we can do a better job here. I, I don't know if you're willing to.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Nee?
Okay, um, I don't envy the applicant trying to put this together, really because you've worked really hard to try to work with your neighborhood and come up with this plan, and then you're hearing a council, this is kind of unusual, ask, asking, not all of them, but many, asking for more density, as you've, and you've consulted with the neighbors, and they're asking for you to tone this down. So, um, but I will speak to how I see it, based on, you know, our guiding document, the OCP for our community, and what our community has said that they value in terms of housing, is, one, I greatly value that you're making the effort to retain this heritage property. And I, I, I really hope that you will stay with the process. It's been a long haul even just to get here. But I, I do feel there's some kind of solution here. I, this doesn't sit with me well, and I'll try to explain why. Um, I, I have no problem with the, uh, secondary suites below. I, I, I think you're right, it creates an engine, otherwise the thing becomes a white elephant. I don't think a conversion, uh, it could be considered, but I like the secondary suite way, because then you get the single residential aspect to it. And within the HRA, we can do what we want. It, like, there's, it's just between you and the municipality. So we're able to go outside the bounds of existing zoning bylaws. So that's not an issue for me, and I think it, I agree with the applicant, it, it works well with that, um, building. I, you know, what I hear is, what we've got are four more single-family houses. I think this was Counsel Kirby and Croft were saying, and, um, we've got those already in the community. And these are kind of priceless opportunities. It is a challenging lot, but it's also a, a unique opportunity to, um, to add to our housing stock that people are saying they want. And this isn't doing that. It's not, it's not fulfilling that obligation that we said we would do when we came to this council, based on new kinds of, um, housing to address, um, needs of people who are aging out in the community, they want to stay here, they want to downsize. And I, I still hear people getting very frustrated with us, that we're not able to provide more opportunities, for example, with, with townhouse type, um, um, uh, buildings. So, so I, I don't know, I, because I'm not a builder, I'm not a designer, I don't know how to map this out in a way that works for the property and for the neighbors, but I, I would support more densification, more kinds of house, something other than single-family here. I, I think, I, I, I would invite something, um, I, I, I think, I don't know who said it was, uh, C- Counsel Croft, it feels compromised. And I understand why, because you're trying to make this work for the neighbors and, and move this forward, and I, and I appreciate what you're trying to do, but it doesn't, it kind of ends up doing, we get the heritage building, but it's not taking advantage of this opportunity to add to, um, our housing options that I think our, our community is pining for. So if we do move this back, if that's the will of council, I hope that, from my perspective, and you're getting a range of opinions here, I don't know what you're gonna do with that, but, um, that's what I'd be looking for, or is, is, uh, more densification, some housing options up in single-family.
Anybody else wish to speak? Uh, Counsel Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, I, I hope you're not getting, uh, dejected. Uh, I, I think everyone wants to see this move forward and wants to support the, the heritage aspect of that. And, and that's what's so exciting about this, uh, this, this heritage revitalization agreement process. This allows us, uh, some creativity that in some other cases we don't have. So I, I appreciate you staying in the game. Uh, if I was to offer some suggestions in support of option two, um, I, I'm, I might, uh, see if, if exploring with staff, maybe a slightly different style of housing could be done with respect to this, the, the, the housing on the Brighton side, which, um, uh, which is fundamentally different than I, I, I think from a style perspective than that, the housing and, and the other neighbors that are on, on Fal Bay Avenue. Um, uh, you know, Brighton Avenue does go all the way through into Victoria, over to Amphion, that, it, it is a, there, it is a thoroughfare. You can, you can drive it all the way through into Victoria and continue. Uh, you have to turn and, and go elsewhere, but, but it being a thoroughfare there, there may be some additional traffic that needs to be considered, and maybe sensitively not added to, maybe only one house on the Brighton side instead of two, possibly. Um, the reason why earlier on I was suggesting, you know, uh, duplexes or triplexes was to, um, in, in similar to some of the other, uh, comments you're hearing from my colleagues, as to, as to way of giving more elbow room to the setting of that lovely heritage home. Um, uh, change is gonna happen, um, and, and let's just see if there's a way of, of being creative, where you're happy, and the neighbors are happy, and we're happy, and the OCP is somehow met. It's gonna be, it's not impossible. I think we can do it. Just to, just maybe one more round, and let's, let's see what we can do with this. Uh, uh, that's some of the, uh, uh, advice that I would offer to proponent and to staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess I better chime in here too, since, uh, if we're trying to give some guidance. I'll, I'll support the option two to send it back, and I think, uh, yeah, it's pretty tough when you get such a wide range of opinions. Um, first off, uh, I think there is legitimate concerns about the, uh, secondary suites and parking. I think that, that has to be sort of looked at and, and at least addressed, uh, in a thoughtful way, not just that we, you know, it's okay, that will, I think we need to have that sort of spelled out. Um, however, I know that there is specifically laid out in the OCP, one of the tools is a heritage conversion for some of these old houses. And heritage conversions are turning them into suites. So I, I, to my mind, uh, this is not a sort of a typical secondary suite, this is a, in many ways, a heritage conversion. We're just not converting the whole house, we're converting a portion of the house to suites. Uh, and so, and that's directly supported by the OCP. So I can support that, but with the caveat that I think the, the parking has to be at least legitimately addressed, given the difficulties of parking on, around that area with all the no parking on Fal Bay Road and so forth. Um, I do also, uh, feel, and, 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 and I, maybe I was sat in the heritage meeting for too long, but that there really should be a bit more green space, uh, on the backside of that bill, just so it has a very distinct, um, envelope around it. It doesn't have to be huge. I don't think the entirety of the adjacent lot needs to be taken as green space, but I think it would suit that house, if we're gonna make it a, a statement house to, to provide some of that space to it. Um, if nothing else, to give a little maybe space for the people in those suites to have a bit of a green space to live in as well. Um, then the, you know, I, I, I would personally prefer to see, like, more compact, dense housing there away from the neighbors, and, and be able to use some, maybe some shared green space and so forth, um, which would require a complete redesign of your application. I'm not sure if you're willing to go there, given all that you've gone through. Um, and I'm also cognizant of the fact that, well, I think this is a logical place for that. I do recognize that we, without going through a, a community consultation of what we're expecting in these kind of places, you're asking, and you have asked of the neighbors, uh, some give to say, you know, it's changing, and there hasn't been a plan attached to that change, and, and everybody's a bit nervous and, and rightfully concerned about that, right? We don't, we buy our houses with the expectation that the zoning is the zoning, and there's, the rules are the rules, and that's kind of what's there. So I think that, um, I think it could be done well. I think it's possible, and I think that having some, uh, townhouse or type things where there's green space away from neighbors and so forth, uh, would actually provide more opportunities for things like parking and, and green space around if possible. I'm not saying it's a requirement for me, though. I think that the model that you put forward, I could support, um, but I probably would look at something like adding a bit more green space to the back of the house, and maybe putting one, you know, uh, duplex or something equivalent in that, in that sort of somewhat shrunken, conjoined lot to make that work. But I'll leave it to you to come up with creative things, but from a, from a feedback perspective, that's kind of where I'm at. Uh, I do believe the parking is gonna be a li- a very legitimate issue on that corner, just because of where it is. Uh, and it's an ideal place to live where you walk, because it's so close to the avenue. Um, but I think we still have to recognize that people buying, particularly buying the bigger houses, uh, will, will probably have houses, have cars attached to them as well. So those are my feedback for this, for this motion. Anybody else who wants to, to add any comments? Counsel to Kirby?
I just want to just support that last comment you made, that, that these large houses, that, that's exactly it. They're gonna have more than one car. And if they have a basement that's full, they might end up, you know, that could be a suite, and then that could be another car. So I, I just, I think the idea of having smaller units, that more densification, which, you know, I think scares the neighbors, but at the same time, if there's, there's a, there's a space made for parking and, um, uh, adequate, you know, servicing, then the, and green space included in a, in a, in a more dense application, that, that we could, we can address those issues that, um, and the smaller the, the property, the smaller the, uh, sorry, the size of the units, the less likely there's going to be a lot of cars. My twenty thousand dollar house has one, one car.
All right. I will, uh, is there any other comments to me here? Okay, so we have right now a motion on the table, basically to send it back to staff and the applicant to discuss, make whatever sense of this you can, uh, and, 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 and come back with, with the same, or, 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 just for, to be clear, this motion does not preclude you from coming back with the identical application, because we're not declining it. Uh, it does, however, is intended to give some feedback for you to discuss with staff, uh, at your, at your discretion. So, uh, with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Duhurst. Uh, long process, a little bit longer to go, in terms of...
Very, very good process to go through, so I would thank you, and I would also thank the neighbors for their input as well, and, uh, we'll continue to work on this, take all of that into consideration, and come back with something that hopefully works for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duhurst.
Just a procedural question, if you will, uh, Chair. Uh, I take it it'll come back to committee to hold as opposed to going to council. Okay, thank you.
Uh, and we are on to item number six, thankfully. Well, uh, it's the same process here. I will just ask Deborah Jensen, the Director of Building Planning, to quickly do an, an overview of the application.
Acting Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, Acting Chair, I believe we're coming close to time.
It's ten thirty, because we're starting it right, a half hour earlier. Um, I believe the last two items on here should be reasonably, well, at least the next item, we may be able to get through reasonably quickly. Can we extend this by, say, fifteen minutes?
I'd extend it to eleven, just to be careful.
Moved and seconded, looking for unanimous agreement. I'll... There we are. I guess the, what's the process if we have to call a question, and we don't have... Oh, she comes, okay. We have a motion on the table to extend to eleven. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll try and, uh, get through this thoroughly, but expeditiously if we can. Um, item number six, another heritage revitalization agreement for six three eight, six four four Beach Drive. Ms. Jensen, if you can give an overview?
Thank you, Chair. So similar to the previous application, the proposed development at six four four Beach Drive would restore, restore the existing home and create a total of four lots. So the home currently straddles two legal lots, um, that comprise the entire property, and the proposal would result in the home staying in its same location, but creating three lots around it. So it, it essentially results in a net increase of two lots. The home is also not on the Oak Bay Heritage Register, but the applicant is proposing to designate the home and place it on the register as part of this application. The statement of significance prepared by Donald Luxton determined the heritage value of the home, uh, indicating that the Georgian Revival Home has design components from both Samuel McClure and John De Castri. The home was constructed in nineteen thirty-three and includes some unique interior elements, such as the disappearing wall and fireplace mantles. So while it is not necessarily usual practice to designate the interior elements of a building, in this instance, the owner is willing to specifically include those two items as protected elements within the designation bylaw. The Heritage Commission has also reviewed the application and suggested that any new homes should reflect the heritage character of the existing home, and we're in favor of the lot layout and the winding road that services those four lots. This application has been reviewed with respect to OCP policy... This application has been reviewed with respect to OCP policy, the neighborhood context, green space servicing requirements and heritage preservation. And again, staff are requesting council direction as to the options outlined.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jensen. And I know the applicants are here still, late at night. If they would come forward, there's going to be some questions, I'm sure. I think, you're welcome to do the presentation you have prepared or perhaps we can just refer to that presentation if there's specific questions. Please feel free to just do a quick overview of the...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mike Miller, President of Abstract Developments. And I actually live at 644 Beach Drive. And I'm here with Adam Cooper tonight, Development Manager at Abstract. I'd be happy to take you through a full presentation. However, just as happy to answer specific questions if that's what you'd prefer.
Okay, I think we'll prefer to ask specific questions. We'll use that tool if we need to get things. So we'll put that to council. This is luckily a little bit more straightforward than the last one. But are the specific questions of the applicant or of staff at this time? I don't see any questions of the applicant or staff. We have a comment, but I would, go ahead, Councilor Kirby. We'll open it up to the public.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to commend you on the layout of this. I think that this is what I would have hoped for from the last application. You've taken everything into consideration and you've taken the neighbors into consideration. And I'm very happy with the layout of this. And once we're ready, I'll be happy to support this.
Okay, thank you. I've just opened up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this application? I see some neighbors, but I don't, yeah, please come forward. Yes. Oh, you have, is this the letter that you wrote? If you wrote a letter to us, it's on the agenda. So if you want to add anything to the letter, you're more than welcome to. Okay, Mr. Baurin, he has a letter on the record in support of the application. Yes, just no point in repeating what's already on the official record? Yes. Just state your name and the municipality you live in, sir. Mr. Sim?
My name is Ed Sim. I live at 629 Beach Drive. I look directly out on this property. At the moment, it looks like a jungle around the street. I'm sure everybody who's driven by Beach Drive there hasn't figured out what's going on up there. It's a beautiful house up there. And myself and two other neighbors who also look directly on there are in favor of this development because it enhances the value of our properties. And there are all view sites there. And if I can mention to Ms. Kirby or Mrs. Kirby, I also started small, on a small house, but you grow. And McClure did not build houses for the poor people. He built houses for the wealthy. And so the better the house, the better the neighborhood, the better the quality of Oak Bay.
Thank you. We'll take all the comments through the chair, though, just for the record, but thank you. Is there any other body for the public who wishes to speak to it? Please come forward. Again, if you could just write your name down when you're done speaking and the municipality that you reside in. You could start speaking now if you wish.
Sure, thanks. My name is Pamela Holmes. I live in Victoria, Fairfield. But my parents live on Newport Avenue, just went up from the corner. And I'm speaking on behalf of them. That, given the understanding that the houses to be built would be with the heritage feel, in keeping with kind of that whole face of Beach Drive, we would support the plan. I think it's really well thought out. And I think it really fits the slope where it is. And, yeah, I think that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward to speak? I don't see anybody, so this is the time for comments and motions? No, go ahead.
Can I move the recommendation from staff?
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed? So the recommendation is obviously to go forward. And this will go through, it's a continuous process here. But thank you very much, Mr. Miller. And our last item on the committee of the whole agenda is item number seven. This was referred back here to this meeting because it was a 2-2 split. And it came back here just because there was no way we were going to get a majority with an even number. So I guess my question is, just in the interest of time here and the need to get to committee, and neither of these being urgent items, they're both sort of, is it reasonable at this point to consider just deferring these to a future meeting and doing that? Or is this something that we want to deal with at this time? The table essentially to a future meeting?
I think we can deal with this at this time. And I see people in the audience that have waited till now, so it would be...
Okay, fair enough.
I'd be willing to test, Chair. I'd be willing to move to table.
Well, let's try and get through it. If it looks like it's going to bog down, then we'll consider that. How's that? We'll just start off, maybe if Ms. Corning, the CEO, could just speak to sort of the strategic impact of this. And then Ms. Jones, if you could just sort of give a sense of what the impact of the non-enforcement recommendation that was given last time.
Through you, Chair. I'm just waiting for it to come up here because I... So as you said, this is something that was referred back. And so there's two options for your consideration. And the first is, sorry, I'm just kind of leafing through here. The first one is under option one, is that once the Heritage Conservation Area project, which we just have kind of kicked off over the last little bit, councils making their appointments, we would be sort of more positioned to actually take this on as a priority prior to the secondary suite, if that's what council's wish is. So that's where it could slot in. The other option is for council to consider putting it on to the strategic priorities, which I think has been mentioned earlier. That would probably happen in 2019. So those are your two options.
Thank you. And just a clarification on the non-enforcement. So that was one that actually did pass last time. I was thinking that was for discussion tonight, but it actually was passed by the group before. Can you just give us some indication of what the implications of that are?
Certainly, Chair. Currently, the resolution was that staff take no further enforcement action for current licensed facilities. So that would mean that facilities that currently exist and that are currently licensed, if an issue came up where there was an enforcement with regards to it being an accessory building, no enforcement action would be taken until the issue has been addressed by the council. Other issues, certainly such as life, safety, health, would be handled through our usual enforcement practices.
And this is daycare specifically is non-enforcement?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we have, sort of, I mean philosophically, just sort of two things. We have a priority right now as a council to go forward with secondary suites as the next priority after the HCA process. And there was some consideration after petition from members of the public to consider actually doing something about the daycare bylaw regulations. And so that is a choice we have, given the amount of time that staff have to choose one of those two. So I think this is in many ways just kind of a choice that we have to make one by one. But I'll take some comments at this time. Councilor Kirby?
I would obviously support option two, that would refer the daycare project to the next council priority setting process, unfortunately, in 2019. But because I see the moratorium on enforcement for the accessory buildings not impacting the daycare that we know was impacted by the bylaw, you know, they would be able to carry on operation and those families would be able to have the security of having their daycare spaces protected by the moratorium. I think that's the safest route to go, to ensure that we can achieve secondary suites regulation in our term. Because we know, as I mentioned before, that there's housing affordability issues, availability issues, vacancy rate is at an all-time low. These are challenges that we have to face now. So I would support option two.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion, option two. I move option two.
That's fine. It's procedurally okay to make a motion at this point. So the motion is to keep the status quo essentially, as the secondary suite is the priority. Any other comments before I call the vote on this? All right. Councilor Zelka?
Sorry, I'm confused by this moratorium thing. I see that what was passed a few months ago was a recommendation to council to do a moratorium. Is that part of this motion? I just wanted to, I'm a bit confused as to what's actually now apparently on the table. I'm not sure.
No, fair enough. To be clear, no, the moratorium is not on the table right now. The question, that was passed. So the question here is whether we're doing the prioritization of the secondary suites or the daycare at this point. And of course, that can be re-raised at another time. Is that correct, Ms. Jones?
Yes, Acting Chair. It might be helpful if I read this out, that while council considers options for regulating daycares, no enforcement action be taken for existing licensed daycares unless there are life or safety issues?
And just to clarify, is that a recommendation or has that been passed? I wasn't quite clear.
That recommendation, July 17th, was passed when the minutes were adopted from the July 17th Committee of the Whole.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Croft?
Thank you, Chair. I continue to support option two. I find that it difficult because staff has really thrown a curve at me in dealing just with the daycare situation. Daycare situation, because really, I see that more as a review of home-based businesses and that we need to, and I was worried that when you first brought that forward, that's why it was going to take such long to review it. Under the zoning process, you were actually looking at the whole aspect of home-based businesses. Because I still think that is something that we need to look at in the future. But I still support the secondary suite moving forward with that before the specifics of daycares.
Councilor Brithwaite?
Thank you. Just through you, Chair, a question to staff. Is there more than one daycare who could have their business work out of a other building on their site? Do we know?
Ms. Jones?
At this time, staff have not received any further complaints with regards to this issue. So again, under the zoning bylaw, this is currently not permitted.
I, through you, Chair, I would just like to say that I actually support option number one because I'd like to see this taken care of sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Zelka, then I'm going to go to the public.
Thank you, Chair. I'm leaning also towards option number one. I didn't realize that we have a moratorium in place. And as a result of this new reality, for me, unfortunately, I missed the last council meeting. I'm actually concerned with the situation we have right now. If we proceed with option number two, effectively, we have nullified one of our existing bylaws. I'm looking, and what I'm, this is my concern from a governance perspective, looking at the best practices for enforcement policy from the Office of the Ombuds person. This was published in 2014. A properly applied enforcement policy should achieve four goals. This is again, the B.C. Office of the Ombuds Person. Avoid arbitrary or inconsistent decisions. I feel that this new enforcement policy unfortunately will violate that. Ensure that similar cases are treated in a similar way. If some other person comes forward wanting to have the same sort of licensed daycare, we would have to treat them differently. Provide local government staff with guidance on and limits to exercising discretion. I don't know what our policy says about that. And provide the public with clarity and details on how and why enforcement decisions have been made. Well, our minutes unfortunately may not have, with respect to our minutes not being, the details of the minutes in the webcast not being available online, I think the public, such as myself, not having missed that meeting, they may not know why and how this has come about. So I'm concerned with that situation with respect to us being in violation, effectively, of the B.C.'s Ombuds person's best practices for enforcement if we continue this situation. And that's number one. Number two, I do notice in the book, Local Government, A British Columbia Legal Handbook, that is published by the Continuing Legal Education Society of British Columbia, that under enforcement of municipal regulations by Supreme Court injunction proceedings is authorized by Section 274 of the Community Charter. So that's the legal basis for us to actually do some of these enforcements. However, delay in enforcement or acquiescence on the part of the local government may result in the offender being given a very generous amount of time to comply with injunction. I apologize, I added the word various. Be given a generous amount of time to comply with an injunction. If and when we ever do get to a place where we change the bylaw or maybe we decide not to change the bylaw, then to ask this particular, the proponents that are currently in contravention of our bylaws to now become in contravention, unfortunately, we will have trouble enforcing our bylaws because we are effectively in acquiescence with them being in violation. So I do worry with the legal situation we're putting ourselves in and with the message we're telegraphing and portraying to the public with respect to where we need to obey our bylaws and where we don't. Because right now, the situation to me seems unclear. And that isn't, in my opinion, good governance. So for that reason, I will be voting against option two and would suggest option one might be a better way to move forward. Thank you very much.
I just, what I might do at this point is just go to the public for any further comment and then I'll come back to council. You have a chance to read that, Nils. Please go forward, give your name and address.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak this late at night. We should be in bed. I was thinking the marathon's coming up. And I feel like we're training for it right now. My name is Toby Blue. I'm the owner and licensee of Seedlings Daycare. And thanks for staying. Yes, many things I'm thinking of. And when I first came out, when I was thinking about coming to speak with you today, I just wanted to mention three main things. One, I need to report back to you and tell you that our eight children in my teeny tiny lovely little program are growing. My seedlings are growing, they're thriving, and they are safe and happy and learning tons. I've employed a teacher in this community. And she is highly qualified. And I support her throughout the day on various tasks. If we change anything here in terms of the moratorium, we are very thankful for that because that means the spaces are staying open. And I do believe that we are in a crisis at this moment in terms of spaces for children. My program is open for multi-age. However, I've sort of said the spaces, you know, in my business plan are for those under the age of three. And then I have my two children, which are twins, and they also get to experience that. They're older now, but, you know, that just allows me to do my other job on the other side of my world. And the things that I really want to consider as more globally is not just for my program, but for this wonderful community that we are so privileged to live in. I feel that we need to have access to our buildings. And I absolutely agree with Councilor Croft. We need to consider what is happening in terms of bylaws with small businesses. We're quite limited right now. And I am experiencing that with the bylaws that we have in place at this moment. I also think that there are not people lining up at the door to open up daycares, unfortunately. We need that, but it's not happening. And there's many reasons why. And I'll mention two of them. One, we're just not, we're not there yet in terms of our bylaws and what we offer in small businesses and also where we can run our businesses. And two, it's a hard job and there's no money in it. And, but what's the payback? Our children. And the Songheas Nations were speaking this evening about keeping their children in their own community. And I feel, I feel that inside. I know that's where our children should be, is in our community. And I speak to moms and dads and grandparents on a weekly basis to add to my big, long, huge waitlist that I think I showed you at one point. And they're not having, being able to keep their children here. They're moving their children out to Langford and to Esquimalt. And yet, they work in this community. And I speak to people in that case many, many times through the month. So the third thing that I wanted to mention is just that the definition between daycare... daycare and home daycare is quite, in my perspective, a bit limiting, because with licensing and island health, I think that we kind of need to come together and communicate with one another in terms of what definitions they have relative to what Oak Bay has in their definition for daycares. There's quite a discrepancy there, and I think that that would be a really good piece to come, come together. But, but lastly, and most importantly, I think that this is just a, a support for our OCP, our Current Community Plan, that we are trying to push forward. And so when you look at yours, options one and two, of course, of course, I want you to take one, because I want this done. I want to move forward. I want to have this thriving program to continue and never feel the worry that, ooh, you know, I'm not complying to bylaw because I'm using the accessory building. But I feel as though I, I could, I, I also am thinking community-wide. I think I also understand that we are looking toward supporting our current economics and our mortgages and our families that are also trying to live in those big expensive homes, and some are not so big, but they're expensive. And I feel as though that that just lends itself to supporting the hard, hard work you guys have been working on for, I'm going to say years. And I think that accessory buildings or, sorry, secondary suites is an important piece, too. So when you say the word, we're not going to deal with this until 2019, oh, deep breath. But I can tell you that if I don't have the moratorium, I cannot exist, and I will not be able to sustain this, and the eight teeny tiny spots that I can contribute to this wonderful community will not be there, because I just can't, I can't continue my business in that, in that way. It's just not going to work for my family and for the program, and for what I, what I believe deeply those children deserve is a, is a safe, learning, wonderful environment to grow and learn in. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Yeah, please go forward. I'll ask you to be fulsome but brief.
Well, I didn't even know you were going to be here tonight. So this wasn't what I expected to be speaking on, but Pamela Holmes, I spoke a few minutes ago. But I know Toby as the teacher of my daughter, and you couldn't have a better person looking after kids, being, being responsible for their care. And I think one of the jobs of council is to be wise and to look after its community. And I know that in this community there are parents with kids who need safe, good care, and I know that's what they're getting. And to have to travel with your kids, I have, you know, people I work with who have to leave half an hour early to get their kids over to some faraway community. Kids need places close to home so their lives are not disrupted. And with all respect to, to the need to follow good guidelines and, and existing laws, we also need to be wise and make sure the care is there, because people need it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone, I'll let Mayor Johnson, he wanted to just respond to the, to the argument made about the enforcement of the bylaws, which is not, frankly, what we're talking about here right now. So, but anyway.
I think, I think one needs to just to kind of make sure these things don't go by and, and become part of the record. And, and sometimes you have to be careful not to take things out of context. So when Counselor Zelka read that little clip about however delay in enforcement, et cetera, is acquiescence, one has to read the whole paragraph. And what it starts with is the enforcement of municipal regulations by Supreme Court injunction proceedings. So that's what that paragraph's all about. It's got nothing to do with applying discretion. I don't know what he's, I don't have, I tried to quickly found the, find the document, and I just actually found it. Here it is. And that is the application of discretion and the ombudsman. And so that's really more on the ground discretion, where a, an officer decides to enforce against A, but not B in similar circumstances. That's what, that's, that's what enforcement discretion really aims at in the four goals. So I think what we're doing here is, I think, is the essence of openness, because we're saying to people, this is how we're going to enforce it, or in this case, not enforce it, so people know it's on the record. They can come forward. So I, I think one has to be a little bit careful about, you know, just reaching in and getting a few words here and making sure they do apply to a situation that we're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Nate, did you have something else to add to this, or you're, okay.
Just if I might just add one really quick word on that. And I, I, I hear what you're saying, Mayor Jensen, and thank you for clarifying that. I still believe, though, that I would prefer not to ask people to live in, in the discretion of what we've asked them to, like, to, to not enforce a bylaw. I would, I would prefer to change the bylaw or something prior to them. So I would, I would like them not to have to live in that cloud for so, if we can call it that. And that's why I support option number one, to get them out of that cloud sooner. That's all.
If I could reply that, and I think that's, that's fair. That's a fair position, although I don't necessarily agree with it, but I think that's different than the one about applying discretion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kirby?
I think we haven't been arbitrary at all. Thank you.
I just wanted to express that, that we, if we move on secondary suites, I mean, this was a very difficult challenge for me to choose between two issues I'm very passionate about, two bylaws I want to see changed now, yesterday, four years ago. But we aren't going to see an increase in daycare spaces anytime soon until the provincial government is able to implement a childcare program that makes it supportive, so they can increase wages for ECEs and see more spaces opened, more quality affordable spaces like you have already done here. And so that's why I think it's okay to delay, but, and also, if we don't enforce, we, we have second people living in that, in that gray zone already in secondary suites throughout this community. So we have to get on with it and create some clarity for them.
All right, thank you. I'll just make the comment. I, I would support option one of doing the daycare, because it's a very, it seems a very straightforward thing to kind of deal with, and I still think that secondary suites are better dealt with in a larger planning context. But those arguments have already been made in prior times, so I think at this point, I'm, I, we're going to have to have a motion to extend, but we'll, Counselor Zelka, you have one more comment to make before I call the vote?
Yes, thank you. I, I have to absolutely agree that, I mean, this is just another example. I think a few have come up tonight where we need the larger planning context. I mean, a housing strategy would, would address something like this, and I really wish that we would please just get on with implementing the policy aspects of the implementation of the OCP instead of more of these one-offs. This is just a fundamental plea to my counselors, please help us with setting this to the proper priorities on focusing on the things that matter so we can actually achieve some of what's in the OCP.
Okay, I think we're, we know what we're going to vote, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, and again, the option number two, which is to contain, continue with the secondary suite as the priority, and defer the, the daycare question until future priorities. So that's the question on the table? Sorry, Counselor, in favor? Opposed? So Counselor Zelka, Counselor Braithwaite, and Counselor Murdock opposed. Motion passes. So we continue on. Thank you. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment?
Reconvene as council.
Oh, to reconvene as council?
Yeah. And then we'll quickly call the question if we want to extend.
Move extension to?
Well, I'll just, I'll call the question then. All in favor? Opposed, not opposed? Back to you, Mayor.
Do we need to stand down so we could change channels? No, we just keep on going. Thank you. Called order in reconvening of the council meeting. I feel rather underdressed, and I apologize for not having a tie for a regular convenement. And at this point, we're going to deal, first of all, with the endorsement of a recommendation regarding Turkey Head Performance Area.
Apologies, Your Worship. I do need a motion to extend.
Move to extend to 11:30.
Wait for that for a minute. Okay, moved second.
To 11:30.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed, not opposed. Thank you. So we do have, just getting back to, we now have the recommendation that we passed as a committee of the whole. We have to deal with that for the Turkey Head Performance Area. Ms., Ms. Jones, is that correct?
Yes, Your Worship. We do also have a motion with respect to option two, and if we'd like to amend to include the daycare.
Oh, so the note that I made when we were talking was, we would only do that if there was, you were amending the strat plan.
Option two would include, including the daycare regulation review under the future priorities.
Okay. Okay. So we need a motion then to amend the agenda to include the daycare issue, please. Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All right. And we now are, we're being asked, Ms. Jones, to endorse that recommendation as council?
Your Worship, what I were currently asking for is a motion to amend the council agenda to include consideration of the daycare regulation review recommendation.
Sorry, I thought I called that question, but you're right. Moved and seconded. To amend the agenda, to put it on the agenda. All in favor? Opposed, none opposed. Okay, so it's carried. Thank you. Counselor Zelka opposed to put it on the agenda. So now it's on the agenda, and then the motion is to endorse the, the motion made by the committee of the whole, correct?
That's correct.
Can someone make that motion? Moved?
Great. Is that number 13? Is that number 13, or are we just going to do it?
My understanding from the motion, Your Worship, was that we would address that now, but if it's the preference of council, we can address them in sequential order.
What, Counselor Murdock?
Okay, so we'll address that as number 13 then. Thank you very much. That's number eight. That has to do with the recommendation that was made regarding Turkey Head Performance Area, please.
First, the recommendation.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, none opposed? Yes. And number nine, that has to do with the sewer cost recovery motion, and we endorse that motion, please.
Move endorsement of recommendation, which was to send it back to staff.
Move the seconded discussion. All in favor? Opposed, none opposed. Thank you. Number 10, we have to endorse a recommendation regarding 2031 run-amid. So moved. This is the one that's, we're staying at committee, oh, sorry. No, this is a different one. Same. Okay. Moved and seconded to endorse the recommendation with respect to 2031 run-amid. Thank you. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, none opposed. Now, the Fowl Bay one is the one that comes off the agenda, because there's nothing to endorse at this point. It just stays at the committee of the whole. Mike, correct?
That the application be referred back to staff to continue negotiations on the proposed development.
Okay, move that recommendation, moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, none opposed. 12, endorsement of recommendation with respect to the beach drive property, 638644. Seconded. Moved.
Right, and move the endorsement.
Endorsement of the recommendation. Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, none opposed. Now, number 13, which is endorsing the recommendation that was passed in regards to the daycare issue. Could I have a motion for that, please?
I move that?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed. Counselor Zelka, Braithwaite, and Murdock opposed. It passes. Thank you.
Move adjournment?
Move adjournment.
Are we moving to in camera?
This is in camera. Thank you.
There was an in-camera resolution. Sorry to interrupt, Your Worship.
Move the in-camera resolution.
We're moving the in-camera resolution.
Seconded.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, none opposed. Thank you. And, thank you.